An Arbig proposal and a well update for historic town hall and the fire station and the pavilion and the hydrants in the field. Turns out they're all tied in together.
Seven came today from Arbig?
That's the Arbig proposal.
Okay.
So, because the budget part of that's probably going to be the longest and the other ones might be fairly quick, I would like to suggest that we work our way separately from that. My first question would be, the RFP for professional auditing services, it's a fairly long document. What is the time sensitivity on that? Because we've got a lot of things to cover tonight. And most of them have deadlines.
Yes, and this we wanted to get posted to the region's NISL on the city website so that you could get our piece back in October and review them and have you then upload something in November. So we really wanted to get this posted to the website. It's pretty generic, you know, all of them, most finance people do the same type of RFPs. So the RFPs are used to being that. It's very generic and, you know, if they have any questions, they can contact us directly.
Well, if this is a standard document...
It's not standard, but it's pretty generic. I mean, we all use the same template and then we change it for each individual city to do that, how they do it.
I guess I should say for those watching on YouTube, it is Monday, September 27th, 2021. This is a work session for the city council. Our agenda tonight is budget discussion and potential resolution on that, and RFP, request for proposal for professional auditing services, which we're currently discussing, a proposal for Arbig, from Arbig to provide internet and phone services for city hall, city offices and the fire station, an update on our well for the city, historic city hall, fire station, pavilion and park hydrants. And we're currently discussing requests for proposal for professional auditing services. So you're saying it's a fairly standard or fair generic document that you have tweaked for us? And when the proposals come in, we would get a chance to see those?
Yeah.
And so you could get this posted. So council questions or comments on the RFP? Linda, could you turn on your mic for me, please?
Oh, certainly.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
I'm just, I have a question for Ms. Strick and Ms. Jaeger. Has our attorney looked at this?
No. This is just a request for proposal, for bids. It's not, it's not a legal document or anything. We're just asking people to bid on the audit.
Other questions?
And once we get the bids, we review them and then, of course, then you'd have an attorney look over the contract if you want with the options.
So the bids would address this. You know, right now, the timeframe is requested if you look on, and it'll all page one, but the third page, one, timeframe, time requirements, they want the proposal issued tomorrow.
Yep.
Due date, October 20th, interview final choices, November 1st through 3rd, and city council approval. So at what point would the city council see the responses to this RFP?
So whenever we get them back, you know, we can forward them to you if you want to look at all of the responses. Otherwise, during the interview process, you can look at who the interviewees are to let us know who you want to interview. I don't know if we're going to get 20 back or if we're going to get three, you know, I just don't know what, what's going to happen. I'd hate to inundate you with 30 RFPs.
Yeah.
Thirty bids. So, you know, we'd look at them and maybe, if we get that many, I don't know, probably will. Normally you don't. Normally you get about three or four, you know, so. But we'd review them and then forward them to you and then we can set up the interviews with the auditors.
Okay.
With firms.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
So do we have a, like a scoring matrix?
Yes.
So that as they come in, we could get the information and that? And we'd be able to look at it that way?
Yep.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Raino.
If there are no other comments, I would move that the council direct staff to post the request for proposals for professional auditing services for fiscal years '21, '22, and 2023.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So Lori, I'm assuming you and Laura Kangas have been through the pertinent information on this?
We did not.
You have not?
I just saw it for the first time today and she sent it over.
Okay.
She offered to meet with me on it afterwards, but it just came over this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to talk to her about it yet.
Looking at the numbers we discussed previously, I recall the Zayo Minute, or M-N-I-T, was $75 per building, and that goes to the county.
That's correct.
And that was for the basic. If we wanted the higher speed, wasn't it like $400?
That's correct, yeah.
So if we got with the 100, 100 at the city office, that would be $400 to the county?
I know it's considerably more, but I don't know the exact price. I haven't looked into that.
So right now, the basic internet for this building and the fire station would be $75 to the county and $365 a month for 100 up, 100 down in each building. CenturyLink, what, $615 for telephone and internet currently per month? And so the numbers you're looking at in this proposal are being compared to current CenturyLink telephone and internet at $615. Zayo Minute does not do telephone, is my understanding?
Zayo is fiber only.
Okay, so we'd still have to have a phone line.
That's correct, yes.
And in the, in the case of offices, multiple phone lines. So for our discussion, there's a phone there that I don't know that's actually hooked up to the wall. It's there because this was a community building and back before the whole world had cell phones, we never knew if somebody needed a phone in an emergency. The chief has asked for a phone in the fire station. So what you're looking at is the proposals, as I understand them, one is the, it's called a managed system, and one is where we would actually buy the equipment. And we would have to maintain, any, any phone issues would be our issues. On a managed system, Arbig would be responsible for the whole thing. Arbig is looking at a, a system proposal, if you can see here, for the office. There are two proposals, 100 up, 100 down, symmetrical system, and the phone would be voiceover IP. And there would be 10 lines. There would be premium lines in there, so everybody has their own DIB. So if somebody were to call for emergency, they would know exactly where that phone was in the building and, and they would all be able to have their own voicemail. There'd also be two standard seats in there, so you can see that. Now, let's start at the beginning here. The beginning is if, if we were to own everything. So the first page that you see here, here's the phone system.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
What page are you talking about?
Yeah, I'm not...
So, so on the first page of the packet from Arbig. So I'm sorry, it's, there's a cover letter and so on the spreadsheet. I'm sorry, I'll go back to the cover letter. Three proposals for three locations, city of Malthen for fiber internet services. Supposed to be the cover letter. We'll start there and make it less confusing. There are two phone proposals for the city. She would like to do a demo on this product. There's two options. You can either purchase the equipment upfront and then have a lower monthly rate or lease or manage the equipment, which then is Arbig's responsibility. So if there's any problems with the phone, they own the system, they fix the system. We, you know, typically if you have an IT department, you buy the stuff. If you don't have an IT department, you just assume any problems would be theirs and they fix it quickly. They have a master service agreement on the back, the last which we'll get to. But so on the second page, if you flip over the cover letter, there are two proposals for the office. And this is 100 meggs up, 100 meggs down, and that would be $365 a month, which is the same as Zayo, except for this would also have the ability to voiceover IP for the phone system. It's a five-year contract, so they can recoup their, their cost, and there would be no install cost. I will say, the calls I've been getting from businesses in the area, right now, some of the smaller businesses, in order to get from this corner to, say, Malthen Garage, it's about $10,000. If the city invests in this and we get to the corner of Iquana on 199th, that cost for the cabinet shop or the garage or the nursery goes down dramatically because the city is invested. So this would be not only an investment that would reduce our overall cost compared to what we would paying CenturyLink and Zayo, it would put everything in one basket, so we wouldn't have to have multiple providers for phone and internet. It would also be a great service to our community because this would reduce the cost for the businesses in the park here. So it is, it's an advantage in multiple ways as I see it, because we would be helping to defray the cost to get that back to businesses and especially the small ones, that this would be very difficult to manage otherwise. If the city felt they could get by with 50 megabits and 50, 50 up and 50 down, we'd save $40 a month over the five years. So that's for the city offices, for the internet services. And we would, we would go from, what do you say, sometimes our videos take three days to upload?
Videos typically take a full day. If it crashes, we try again the next day. Sometimes it can take up to three days before it gets fully loaded.
At, at these speeds, you barely have time for lunch typically. So that's, that's that. The, the original proposal was to try and do this building and the fire station at the residential speeds of 100 up or 100 down, 20 up, which should be sufficient. Conversation with chief and the IT department, we've been told that would be sufficient. The problem is that doesn't cover the infrastructure cost that's necessary and they would have to charge us upfront. So an upfront charge for the infrastructure cost, we could get this down to $90 a month, but we'd have to pay $5,700 upfront. At this rate, we'd pay over five years about the same, it'd be just about $6,000. So either pay 57 upfront or six over five years. The advantage is we'd be getting 250 meggs down and 50 meggs up, which if we were going to host anything...
This building you're talking about?
This building and the fire station. This, this proposal on page, the second page is, is for, well, it's the same for both the fire station and this building. So this is the fire station.
So what will the fire station, well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
What will the fire station get? You're talking about, I don't...
Fire station would get 250, if you look at page, the third page here, that one, right? No, that one, the other one, that one on your right, that's the fire station. So the fire station is 250 meggs down, 50 meggs up. So if they were hosting any seminars or training, they could actually do video with that. They would have plenty of capacity for years to come.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Is the fire station using the lower level now?
Yes.
In this building?
In their building, in the fire station.
There's a lower level in the fire station?
No, I'm sorry. I thought you meant lower level service. They're currently using the service, internet service from CenturyLink in the fire station.
Okay, but we want, they, they will get 250 and then 250 down. Why are we doing more down and less up? We, we don't use it as much up here?
Typically, the federal standards, federal standards are 100 down, 20 up. That's the federal minimum, shooting for the federal dollars.
Okay.
So typically, an eight, it's called an asymmetrical system. An asymmetrical system typically will be that. And we, we proposed 100 down and 20 up, and they came back with 250 down and 50 up, which is a better deal.
Yep.
And it's only $90 more a month.
Okay.
So that's the fire station. This building would have the same as the fire station, 250 down, 150 up. So again, any seminars, any, any presentations out of this building, we'd have plenty of up to load that if they needed to put videos up for planning and zoning. If we ever wanted to live streaming, we'd, we'd have capacity in this building to do that. It would also allow us to, to do things on the internet so that we could actually use our computers here at the, at the facility. So it would expand our capabilities in renting this building out. It certainly would expand all of our meeting capabilities. We've had Zayo's router sitting down right below me for 10 or 12, 15 years, whatever. It's been, it's been a long time and it's never been activated. So this is the proposal that we had talked about at our last meeting. That's the internet proposal. So again, in the offices, we have a choice of 100 down, 100 up, and, and that's because of the type of video that they would be loading over there, or 50 down and 50 up. Now, the people I've talked to in the business say either of those would serve us well. One thing that they said, it's, it's only $40 less a month to go to the 50-50 and you can always move up. It's much more difficult to start high and move low, but you can start low and move high. So we have an option, trying 50-50, and if that's not enough, we can move up. Or we can just go right to 100-100 if that would be the council's choice. Both the fire station and this building would then have 250 down and 50 up. That's $182 a month. And then each would get a single phone line if we so chose. Chief has said he wants a landline for emergency services over there.
Okay.
That's $41.26 a month, plus any government taxes and fees.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
So the 365 for five years, that's no upfront installation costs, that's just the...
That is correct.
Same with the other proposal, the 182 and the 41.26, no upfront installation costs, it's just the lease or the rent?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that, they, they're doing that by wrapping that in over five years. If they have a five-year contract, they're, they're getting their install cost that way rather than upfront. That's one of the reasons that they typically charge about $10 a foot for install in the residential, and they've been giving the residents 250 flat fee if they'll sign a five-year contract. So they've, they've tried to make it easy upfront. And like I say, that, should we choose to do that, that brings internet deep into our commercial park, which should aid our businesses tremendously.
And then they, then our local businesses can pull off of that box or whatever it is.
Correct. By us getting it to that corner, they have that, that much less to go. I mean, Troy has called on this and it would just be a tremendous benefit because he's right across the street. But I think for, I think that, my understanding with Danny Johnson at the garage, it was about $10,000 to get from that corner back to him. So that would reduce that. Because it, we're, it's almost a mile of, of infrastructure that they put in to get back to city offices. So that is, that is that. Any questions on that at this point? Then we can go through the phones and then we can go back and answer all questions. Anything else on the internet right now?
I will, I'll wait with my question.
Okay. So then if you go to the next page, these are the phone packages. And there's two options here. And so the, there'll be 10 lines that they, they would be providing. They're called the SIP trunks. The first one is if we were to purchase the equipment and maintain it ourselves. You'll find that page one is, this is what we would pay monthly on either, whether we purchased it ourselves or have them manage the system. So this page is going to be the same for both systems. And this is, this is information, I, I don't know that, I think Ellen provided this, or did you provide this, Lori, to, to her?
To Laura?
Yeah.
Yes, Steph provided it.
And so the phone system would be voiceover IP, so this would be a cloud system. Right now, we have a dedicated line, but we have our, our credit card system on an analog line. This would be the preferred way to do the credit card system. I think there was some question about how, because we have two security lines coming out of that. Is that fire and building security or why do we have two?
We have two separate lines for fire and for security, yes.
So I think they just have to figure out how to make sure that the security is not unusual to do over the cloud. I'm not sure about fire. I don't know if you know, chief?
I don't.
So that would still be a, you know, question to make sure we could, could take care of that. But you can see here the standard seats and the premium seats. The premium seats, each of them would have their own direct, direct in dial identification for emergency services. And we can expand to 20 DIB block down below, the last item, at $3.50. So that's the package price for those phone lines, whether we rent or buy. You can see on the second page, these are the actual phones themselves, and we currently have six phones total. If we purchased two of the, the black and white six-line phones, and this would typically be Lori and Ellen, or the, the front desk and Lori, and that'd be $270 to purchase them. And then the four other phones would be a total of $640. So $910 if we purchased the phones. The router for the phones, it's rented on either one, so it's the same either way if you're renting or purchasing. The switch, if we buy it, it's a $400 switch. And so purchase total would be $400 and monthly cost would be $799. And then the Grandstream and the Polycom is basically a wall bracket for 10 bucks. Grandstream for one line is the same either way because I'd be purchasing. So you can see the out-of-pocket on the bottom there, recurring monthly charges, $134, $799, one-time purchase of $1,360. The installation, the $350 for installation, is the install and training. So they have multiple days of training on the system. And that's going to be, again, the same on both of them. So estimated total monthly charges would be $142.83 for 10 phone lines. Estimated non-recurring one-time charges, $1,710. The next spreadsheet gives the same information, if they were to manage the system for us. Page one is the same, $134, 100 and whatever, plus 34 for estimated surcharges. Managed total, the black and white, the two black and white six-line phones, is $590 a month. And the other four phones is $1,580 a month for $21.70 for that. The router would be the same, $799. The switch, instead of the $400 one-time price, would be $699 a month. It's $14.98. And everything else is the same. The Grandstream one line and the Polycom wall bracket are still the same. Our price, $50 either way. If you take a look at the summary page, still $134 for recurring services, 36 for the phones, router switches. And the $50 is the same either way. That's the one-time purchase for us. $350 is the same for installation and training. Our monthly goes from $142 to $171, and our out-of-pocket is 400 instead of the $1,710. So it's about $30 more a month and $1,300 less in out-of-pocket. The advantage I see there is they own the system. If there's a question, if they, on the purchase, there's a one-year warranty on the phones. If they manage the system, they own the whole thing. They maintain it no matter what. And being is, we don't have an IT department. If anybody knows business people in the area, I, I don't know if the city's been down recently, but the, the businesses have been down quite a bit lately. Their phones just haven't been working. Nursery said it's costing them thousands of dollars, the phone system already is. So to me, if you take a look at the current charges, 615 for telephone and internet, the potential charges for Zayo, which does not include phone, somewhere between $75 and $400 per building, and $365 per month for internet, it appears to me that this is a better proposal for us. It also, in talking with people, that would benefit our business community. And so I would recommend that we, we go with this. We just have to decide, do we need a phone in this building? And do we want the 50-50 or the 100-100? And if we decide to go with this, we want 50-50 and 100-100 in the city offices.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
So on this equipment, we would go with the proposal that we're leasing the equipment as technology changes? Do they, is it upgrade the equipment at no charge or how does that work?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
In, in the five years, they're responsible to keep it current.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I agree with you. This is not our area of expertise from an IT standpoint. It feels like, I like the fact that we're just paying for a service and if it's broke, we know who to call.
Yep.
And the nice thing, all those DIB lines can have, if we so choose, they can have dedicated voicemail. I, just the speeds of everything would be tremendously better.
Yeah, I mean, and look at some of the, some of the gaps that we have when this thing takes two days to upload. You go home, you hope it uploads overnight and then the process is, yeah, you're supposed to move it to the top, but 22 hours later after it's failed three times, you don't do that. And then it's there, but it's not there, right? So this is, loads instantly, move it to the top. You don't have to go try to do something else and then come back to, you can just follow your standard work and be done. So...
And that, and that's great too, because that's one of the things that Ellen was explaining to us. You're, you're waiting for... You're waiting for it to happen, and then you go off and get distracted with something else, and.
Yeah.
So, and that's one of the things I've heard from people that in town here that have gotten higher speeds, because they're used to going to get their sandwich and coming back, and it's like they haven't gotten up out of their chair yet, it's done. It's been received very well.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Are we able to use any of it, and I don't think it's the American Rescue Act funds for this?
I do not know that, because the Rescue Act, from what I'm seeing, is for unserved areas. And I'll send you guys all an email, an article that was in one of the financial journals recently, when they're talking about, what happens is if CenturyLink serves one home in a block, they don't have to go address by address, they just say they're served. So, they might have 300 homes that don't have anything, but they serve one in that block, and if they are considered served by federal standards, then they aren't qualifying for the rescue funds. So, but that is a question that can be asked. We are having a meeting, Lori and I are meeting tomorrow morning with Laura from Arvig and Samantha Markman from the county, to talk about county funds that are available, and where they can be used. They're trying to get an updated federal map, but the problem with the federal maps are companies like CenturyLink will serve one home and then claim everything is served. But if we can get updated federal map, and this area is included, we can see. The thing is, there's not install costs, so it's a little different here, because we're not defraying install costs, this is a monthly fee. But we certainly can ask that question with the county tomorrow, because they've been told focus on broadband. And those cities that are getting 10 or 15 million dollars that are all built out, we're hoping that the county gets some of that money back, and will send it to locales like ours. But that discussion will be where else we can go on the rest of the city, and what funds the county has, so we can bring that information back to the council after that meeting tomorrow. Other questions about this proposal? Lori, do you have any questions on it at this point?
No, I need time to review it. I will have questions, though.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
So, it appears on the network services agreement for the phones, we have till July, September 30th.
That is correct.
Okay. Is there the same, do we know is there the same deadline on the other pieces of it?
Well, the phone is part of it, because it's over I.P., so it's.
It's the whole.
Yeah.
So, what?
The reason, reason that is, the summer pricing is, they won't guarantee anything once, because they have to schedule the infrastructure, they have to trench from that corner like they did last year, so they have to actually trench right away, all the way down to 199th and down to the city offices. So, the summer, and I, you know, most utilities I've been involved with previously, the summer goes through October, and quite often into November, but theirs, theirs ends September 30th.
So, then if we, Ms. Strake has not had the opportunity to review it, not had the opportunity to ask questions of Arvig, and we need to have this, we need to respond by the 30th, which is Thursday, do we meet on the 30th and yea or nay it? Or if Ms. Strake has her questions, well, we have to post it too, though, so that's...
No, we couldn't have it. I would say we make a decision here, and if Lori has significant questions after meeting with Laura from Arvig, then we just have to decide whether we go ahead or not.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
Lori, Strake, are you also saving files on the internet aside from the video?
We have everything, we're trying to give everything electronic, property files, meetings, everything.
So, the scanning in of some of those older documents, and then uploading them to the, so, I guess the big thing would be, part of your research would be to find out if the 100/100 would suffice, or if the 50/50 would suffice?
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the 100/100 for the city offices, and the 250/50 for the fire and hall, and for the 10 phone lines, all leased equipment, pending Lori not having some, a successful conversation with the Arvig rep, and just go with the faster speeds and be done.
And did, is that fire station and city?
Yep, fire station and city hall, which is on page two there.
What do you guys think about a phone in this building? Voice over I.P. Councilmember Rainville.
I believe we should have a phone here. I know we have the address up there, but if people are calling 911, and the, I don't, does 911 updated to, they don't have the answer, the location of the cell phone, correct?
They don't.
Some do, some don't. Most of Minnesota is in the enhanced 911 system, so they can GPS the phone coordinates.
Okay.
There are a few exceptions to that, but by and large, Minnesota is an enhanced 911.
Is enhanced at this, when I first started, it wasn't, and so, I'm right here, well, where's right here? So, I, my concern is that we have seniors using this facility, and if there is an emergency, and they are rattled, are they able to give that information? And I guess if you're saying dispatch is able to pin it to here, that makes me more comfortable.
So, you've been to the seniors group, does everybody have a cell phone these days?
I don't know. I know a lot of people that don't have cell phones, and they're not even seniors.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
I agree with Murray, I think there should be one here, just, just in case of an emergency and.
The reason it got unplugged years ago was because we were worried about people making long-distance phone calls, because that was a big deal, was, you know, people.
Kids coming in here or something.
And it was just like, here's a free long-distance phone call, which I don't think anybody even thinks about anymore, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
The building is reserved, people aren't just coming in and out.
No.
So, if, and the question would be then for Laura is, can we block long distance on that? Back when I was doing phone systems, you could block lines for long distance, and so, and then we, even like at our precinct, we had to then write a blue card out every time we made a long-distance call, turn that in, when the bill came, then you got the 45 cent charge, and you paid it up. But if we could block it, that would eliminate the need to worry about long distance. If there are long distance, if you're not unable to block it, and I rented on Sunday afternoon from noon to 4:00, and when the bill comes in and there's long distance from this phone, they know I built, I rented it, I'm then responsible for it. It's somebody that I invited in here as part of my, whatever I'm having, then that, I would, I would assume I would be responsible for that, and maybe that would be written into the rental agreement.
Yeah, I think, I think having a backup there is a good opportunity, good for us.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
Should we just put it up and see how it goes? I doubt that long distance is going to be a problem.
No, I don't think so either.
So, I don't know that we need to invent a process to.
Okay, so to clarify, you're saying the 100 up, 100 down, at 365 a month?
Yep.
Five years at the city offices?
Yep.
250, down, 50 up, the 182, and a phone at 41.26 per month, five years for both this building and the fire station.
Yep, and 10 lines of the city offices, right?
Yes, and that.
The 137 plus the 400.
Yeah, 171 plus the.
Plus the startup cost of $400.
Yep.
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and officially, it's 171.52 plus 400 in one time. Motion and a second. Councilmember Alders makes the motion, Councilmember Rainville makes the second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
So, Lori, would you have the discussion with Arvig, just, you want to just send it out, is this one good, or do you got problems?
All right, and we know the deadline to sign up is Thursday, same as the budget.
So, how does that work? So, Lori's going to agree, and if she agrees, she's going to just sign us up?
The customer contact, customer acceptance, there's one authorized signature on here. Do I need to sign this, Lori, or you?
Is this something we would want the attorney to review, though?
Certainly. And you can find out if that's something that, I would assume you're authorized to sign, but if I need to sign it, I can swing up and sign it, too, if that's, needs to be done before Thursday.
This isn't the right agreement, right? This is not only just agreed to from service or components.
What's that?
Well, this is the 50 up, 50 down, so this is going to have to be.
Yeah.
Updated to what we just proposed.
And that representative will be at our meeting tomorrow, so we should be able to work things out quickly. So, if you wanted to send that off to Attorney Rupi in the morning, and see if he has any questions or concerns. Any other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of this proposal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It's going to be good to get high-speed that much closer to the business district.
Yes.
It will be, I think there'll be some businesses that are ecstatic.
Yeah.
The bank, the bank is.
Give some control of businesses.
There's a lot of businesses, other than plumbing, there's a lot of them that are very anxious for it, so if we bring it into the, into the business park, it'll be tremendous advantage.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I thank you for your work on this. You've spent a lot of time, between you and previous Councilmember Dan Bryant, spending hours on the internet and trying to bring something to the city, and I think we reached that goal, and so, thank you for doing that.
You're, thank you, you're welcome. I was talking with this representative, and they came across an email from Arvig from five years ago, where I was asking for help. I said, "You really have been at this a long time?" I said, "That was, Arvig was way down the line." They weren't even a question when I started this. I appreciate it, it's been a lot of hours. But, you know, what I appreciate about Arvig is we did that proposal for areas south of Viking, and from Burns Parkway over to the west edge of the city. They are bringing in the business district and the areas around here, some homes around here, at no extra infrastructure charge above and beyond. Rather than starting a new project, they're allowing us to piggyback on the old project to bring it into this community, so that's, that's a real benefit, too, so. All right, well update. For those of you that only heard about the wonderful fireworks.
Yeah.
We've known for a while that our well is weak here, and we've only been discovering recently, with the addition to the fire station, some of the problems we have. I will try and keep this as concise as I can, but, you know, this summer, when the fire station went up, and we found out we did not have enough pressure typically to run the toilets in the new addition, in a nutshell, we have a very tiny storage tank down the basement of this building. We have a well sitting right there that's at least 50 years old, unknown condition. Typically, a half-horse pumping there, which is filling the small tank. This tank is then responsible for everything downstream. This building with four bathrooms and a kitchen, the fire station with two bathrooms and hoses to wash the trucks, and wash machines to wash equipment, the pavilion with two bathrooms and four sinks, and it also runs the hydrants that go all the way down to the ball field, all on this one tank. So, everything is trying to go through an iron filter and a water softener here, and at some point, somebody reduced the lines to 3/4 inch from 1 inch. So, what happens is if you're using it downstream, and that's what we found out when we started using the fire station, if this starts running, it can't keep up if you do anything else. As a matter of fact, there is a storage tank in the fire station, so the thought was, when they were building the new bathroom in the fire station, they ordered an iron filter and water filter, because we needed them in this building and in the city offices, because the well depth we have here is bringing up a lot of iron. So, the assumption was they would need it over there, too. Well, that's only a storage tank, so what happens is when nobody's using anything, this little tank pumps to that bigger tank in the fire station, and as long as that's the only thing they're using for a little while, they can run a bathroom short, for a short period of time, and this will try and keep up with it if nobody's using this building here, and they're not doing anything else in the fire station. But it turns out, there is no well other than this one right here. So, and when Markwell came out, and they're extremely busy, but they came out on Thursday to look at this, and the contractor who's been working on the fire station was the only one available at the time, so he called me as a backup, because they needed to find out what was downstream, where they could be here, and they'd go out and check other faucets and other buildings to see what was, what was all in the system. So, we found out everything is treated, and everything's on the same little tank down here. So, the perfect storm hit this weekend with the festival, because people were in this building, people were in the fire station, people were in the pavilion, and vendors were using the hydrants at the end, and there was no water. And so, Ron Danielson from Markwell came out to see why there was no water, and he said, "At best, you got two pounds coming in here." They already had the proposal into the city of replace the half-horse that's in here and keep everything downstairs the way it is. He said, "You're never going to be able to service anything downstream on these smaller So, we have three options in front of us to get water to this building, and then we have to discuss, once it's this building, what do we do downstream? His recommendation after, so, so that everybody understands, we had a few thousand people here in the park and no toilets. We had porta-potties with all the toilets in this building and in the pavilion, I don't know what they did in the fire station, but everything else went down. And so, Ron, in his experience, said, you know, we could run hoses from Bill Suparet to the pavilion and backfeed everything, and everything would work through the weekend, and then we'd go back and figure out what to do after that. So, we did rig up about 400 feet of hoses. The owner of Bill Suparet graciously said, "Use all the water you want," and we were able to keep functioning through the weekend. As long as there's not significant demand, you can flush most of the toilets. But what you will see is, that little tank is trying to push through an iron filter and a water filter, so everything downstream of that is strangled by those two devices. So, you already have reduced the line from 1 inch to 3/4 inch, then you reduce it to PEX, which is slightly smaller, and then you're trying to push it through two devices. So, Ron from Markwell has recommended that we, they've already purchased the iron filter and the water softener for the fire station, that's already been purchased and sized for that building. His recommendation is, in addition to looking at this well setup, that we give everything to 1 inch in the basement here, we bypass to the fire station, so only this building is going through the iron filter and the water softener, because that's the all it was designed for. We didn't know those other things were on it. So, it was rated for this, that's why we're getting. That's why we're getting rust in our systems here, because it's not rated for that. He also recommends that the installer, Nowland Plumbing come over and we, that we set up an annual service contract because those softeners and iron filters should be serviced regularly to make sure they're functioning properly. He said, "So if you do that, you'll get the pressure you need here, you'll get the filtering you need here. Then you would put a one inch line, would continue on to the fire station, and there would need to be investigation. Does that line come into the fire station and then back out to the pavilion, or did they tee it off under the ground somewhere? That's a separate discussion." He would then recommend we take the iron filter and the softener we already purchased for the fire station, put it in at the fire station, run a one inch line to that and then filter it there, and then you would have everything you need. You could tap off, if you didn't want filtered water, treated water for washing trucks or outside hydrants. If you still wanted it for washing the gear, you could set that up. And then we'd have equipment that we already purchased and is sized for us, we can't return it. So that's already paid for. That's no additional. We just have to get it installed. The labor and the material's already been paid for. That's his recommendation. Now, that's all incidental because we revealed how bad our problem is. Back to this, their proposal is, if you see the wellhead's right out here. He says it's his best guess. He's been in this business since, you know, his dad owned it. He's been in it most of his life. He knows most of the wells that have been drilled around here. He said, "That's at least 50 years old. Prior to that, we actually got our water from the house across the street, Don Greenberg's house, put it underneath the road and we brought it to this building." So he said, "That's 50 years old. Option one, we replace the half inch pump that's in there, leave everything except for the smaller lines alone downstairs. You might get 10 gallons per minute. That would be $1,754 if they can get the old pump out. It's a steel casing. He says they tend to corrode and sometimes it's very difficult to get a pump out that's been down 50 years. If they can get it out, he would check the casing as best he can. He would see how deep the well is and he would see what the well is capable of doing. If the well is only capable of 10 gallons per minute, he would recommend a new half inch pump be put in there and then the city decide what to do. Likely drill a new well. If we were likely, he said, "If you drill a new well," he might throw in the small well for the ice rinks. Option two, if there has capacity of 20, 22 gallons per minute out of the well when he tests it, there's two other options. We go to a one inch, one horsepower pump for $3,629. And then we would have to change the tank downstairs to match the new capacity. So that package price was $3,629 to include the pump and the tank downstairs. The recommended system is a one horsepower, constant pressure, variable speed pump. And everybody I know that's had that put in would prefer a variable speed pump. You don't have the on-off cycling. He says, "When you're not using a lot of water, cycling like that is tough on the pump." So he said, "If you do, if you do this, it's a better option. It's another $800. But that only can be done if the well can produce that much water." So we have three options in front of us. If, if there's other repairs that are needed, you see down below, additional labor is $285 an hour. That is two men and a truck. And any additional excavating they do, we need $19 a foot. So if this well is, is still serviceable, then it depends on the capacity. If it's, if it's low capacity, our only option really is a half inch pump, or half horsepower pump. And we go with that and then the council has to sit down and decide what to do long term. If it, if it pumps more than that, then we either go with the $3,629 for a one horse or a 4,450 for a one horsepower. I know it's a lot of information on, on short notice. Either way, he was recommending that we change the size of the pipes here and direct the water to the fire station. Even if we have to go with a half inch, it's still gonna get a, you're not gonna choke down all the water before it even gets to the fire station.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
When we talked about the high capacity well needed for the fire department, one of the ideas floated was if it were near the fire station, it could couple as a water source for the rinks. Once it's a high capacity system, is it only used for that and we can't tap into it for the bathrooms and sinks in the halls?
According to, to Ron, because I asked that same question, he said, "No, you cannot." It's, it's the equivalent of drinking from a fire hose. 500 gallons a minute is a 12 inch pipe. And he says, "Trying to tap something off that, you'd be running for a little bit at the fire station or," he said, "Even, the only time you need a lot of water for the rinks is when you're initially laying them down. After that, you just want a light spray." He said, "Doing that would tax that system even more because you're trying to run a much larger pump that's running 500 gallons a minute rather than 20 gallons a minute." And he says, "It, it, he would definitely recommend it. I'd rather give you another well," he said, "than ever try and do something like that."
Okay.
So the question was, can we even just tap off that? And he said, "No, because you're firing that thing up every time you need it." He said, "That's meant to fill a truck, no."
Okay. So then the second question would be, if they determine this well to be inadequate, would there be a possibility of sticking a well closer to the rinks that would service coming this way and the rinks?
What, what he would recommend is that he sits down with the council at that point and discuss it. His recommendation would be two wells, a small one by the rink and a small one for the rest of the buildings.
Okay.
And he said, "If you wanted to take the one by the rink and, and go underneath the parking lot to the fire station, you could rig up something." But he would recommend two smaller wells at that point.
Okay.
And, and not, he wasn't asked, but he said, "If you were to have to drill a new well, he might consider contributing the second one." And I said, "I would say that publicly." So it wasn't, you know, it's not something we can hold him to, but he just said, you know, he cares about the city and he wants it to be done right, so.
So Mr. Mayor, when we did talk about that money that we set aside for a well thinking we were gonna put one in for the fire station, do we still have that money?
Oh, yeah.
So we could use that for a new well?
And, and actually, I said, "If we needed a new well, what are you thinking with pump?" And he said, "About $10,000." Was his estimate. You know, again, off the top of his head. So the 500 gallons per minute, that's the one we were talking at 80. I asked him about that because, you know, I verified that he wasn't interested in doing that one.
Right.
Because he's local. He said, "I don't think you can do that there with the geology." Says, "I know every well that's in this area."
You said you know it to different areas.
He said, "The problem, if you go there as deep as you need to to get that kind of water, it's gonna be so rusty it'll ruin your equipment."
Okay.
And again, I'm paraphrasing. We've had about six hours speaking over the last couple of days. But he's just saying he knows every well in this area and the deeper you go, the worse the water is. He would like to, to try and hit about 90 feet. And he says, "You can get some good water at 90 feet, but you should go much deeper than that." He says, "You're, you're gonna ruin your equipment." And that's why, you know, when, when the chief gets around to that, we have some public-private partnerships potentially where wells are already operating. We know what condition the water is. Otherwise, he did, we did talk about his recommended vendor and we've already spoken with them as, as to test wells in the area. So he was a wealth of information. And at this point, we can't use the bigger well for the smaller buildings. But we can do better than what we're doing right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
What are we looking for here to decide tonight if we're gonna choose any of these or do we need to wait for him to tell us what the possibilities are or?
So what we need tonight is to give him the okay to pull that and then see what we get. And if, if he comes with a recommendation, you can't do any more than a half inch, then right now we do a half inch and we could sit down and talk about it again. If he says, "You've got enough water there and your well's in good enough shape to have the one horsepower," I'm sorry, I keep saying inch, "the half inch, the half horsepower." If he says, "We've got capacity to do the one horsepower," my recommendation would be that we go with a variable speed one horse in that situation and put a new tank downstairs. So if he can pull that out without ruining anything, he will tell us you have capacity for option one, we have capacity for option two and three. I would say if we're gonna do two or three, my recommendation would be three, variable speed. If we don't have water capacity for that, he'll put in the half inch pump if we approve it and then talk to us about new wells. So at this point, what we would be saying is, we were giving him the permission to pull the wellhead, pull the pump, investigate water flow and make a recommendation. And so we would say, "If, if the water is there, does the council want to go with option two or three? If the water's not there, we would authorize option one and then we would discuss new wells." Option three, two and three includes a new tank and plumbing downstairs. Option one does not.
Mr. Mayor, what are we doing today for the hockey rink, so?
We run, we run our old tanker, our old fire engine. And Joe and Eric go down to Markwell and fill it and come back and dump and fill it and come back. And I think their initial, I think their initial, I'm not, Lori, if you know for sure, but I think it's about 5,000, 6,000 gallons they do initially on the hockey rink.
I don't know. I just know that it takes 18 truckloads or so.
And then when they want to surface it, they go down and fill it up again. And, and the problem with doing that
Yeah. It's tedious.
Well, it's, it's tedious. I mean, you're driving in the winter and, and
Yeah, I can't, we can't get away from, we can't figure out a way to use the well, water well.
And, and right now, I think Ron has a, a 100 gallon per minute well and a 250 gallon per minute well. Depending what he's using. It, it takes a while to fill the truck and then they go back and forth. The other challenge with that, without having water at the source, you can't put a nice light spray on it. They have to go fill the truck and, and it's 47 to 50 degrees and now you're dumping it on that and you melt spots in the, if you've been out on the hockey rink, you see pockets where we've actually melted through. So it's, it's not the best way of doing it. I applaud that they've worked very hard to get it done for all these years. But it would be better to have a smaller well at a minimum over there to surface those. And if we could tie it into the existing buildings, even better.
Yeah, I agree.
So Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Yeah, when we originally talked to the hockey rink, the, the estimate was it was like 60,000 gallons to fill that.
Six zero?
60,000. And, and our truck, tanker truck holds 2,000. So it's that many trips.
It's a lot of trips.
It's a lot of trips. So we have to do something over there because that's just not sustainable.
No, it's not using, good use of time.
No.
Well, and the problem is if you've got snowfalls and all.
Freezing up as you're driving back and forth to work because it's, or because it's the water.
And the other problem is if, you know, if we have snowfalls, we don't have that many people. Joe and Eric are out blowing snow and so that sits.
Yeah, that's a solid priority.
But that is, you know, that's a, a separate discussion at this point. Right now, we have facilities that, I, you know, in October, we typically shut down the hydrants and I believe we winterized the pavilion. But we still have to have a decision so we can get equipment installed in the fire station.
Is it a separate discussion or do we make the call to make a proposal to go option one and then have them in? I mean, we have the money. We have an ear tag for wells and we haven't spent it yet. It's like
Well, I, I would, I would recommend we, we figure out, if this well is, is capable of handling option three, I don't want to drill a new well if I don't have to. Now, if he's, if he's saying that we can still do a smaller well over there, that's, you know, that's a separate option that we would still be money budgeted this year.
Right.
But if, if we only can do option one, then we have to talk about, are we drilling two wells and at what cost and where? Because that's a bigger discussion. How do we, how do we dig up? Because now you have to dig up the lines and tie your new well into existing lines and that's where we should decide, do we really want to keep putting treated water down to the ball fields? So that would be a
Soundwater's nice for washing trucks?
Nice for washing trucks. I don't know.
That's nice for washing holes, though.
No. So, so the, the motion I would be looking for is authorizing Markwell to come and investigate the options that we actually have before us.
Okay.
If, if that well is sufficient to do 20 plus gallons per minute, then I would recommend option three. If it's not, then I recommend option one and we get back and talk about it. I would also, if you're gonna make the motion, authorize whomever, whether that's Nowland Plumbing or Markwell, to upgrade the copper lines or whoever's doing the work at the fire station, to upgrade the lines here so that the fire department's getting the full one inch line. So we bypass this filtering system and go to the new one at the fire station. So.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we allow Markwell to pull the pump, investigate the water flow, make a proposal for us, and also allow an upgrade of the copper lines to the, did you want it to the fire station? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Bypass the treatment system here, go directly to the fire station.
Bypass the treatment system, what he said? Direct to, to the fire station.
And, and if, okay, you second? And just to clarify, if they find this current well is in decent shape and can do 20 plus gallons per minute, do we want to authorize option?
Three.
Two or three? Three?
Option three. Why don't you give a three?
I'm good with three.
All right. So if this is capable, we would go with option three and move right into it and replace the tank downstairs. If it is not, if it's, if it's not good at all, we have to come back and meet again. If it's good, if it's, if it's reasonable to at least get us like 10 gallons per minute, we'd go with option one. Linda?
Huh?
So if, if Markwell comes out and they say, "You only can use a half horse here," do we put in that half horse and then figure out what to do going down the road? Because we gotta keep these buildings running.
I imagine, I mean, I don't, I, yes.
Okay, so as part of the motion would be, if it's capable of option three, option three. If it's not, it's option one.
Yes. But I mean, won't he come back? I mean, when, when I said, "Make a proposal for us to approve," won't he come back and present what we, option we need to have?
I will say, if you get them out here before November, take it.
So we're just gonna take the option? The, what we're trying to say is that we're going to take whatever option they propose to us because they'll have done the investigation, right?
Yep.
Yep.
If, if they're saying you can't handle more than half horse, he'll do that.
Yeah, okay.
If you can handle more than that, he'll do that.
He'll do that.
And we're just authorizing that right now. If you can handle 20, 22 gallons per minute, go option three.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
I guess I'd like to discuss, assuming they do, if things go well and we can go option three, I would propose that we look at what it takes to get a well up by the hockey rink. If it's option one, we're automatically gonna talk about that. But if it's option three, we go another year without having a plan for the hockey rink. So I would say, if it's option one, we're automatically gonna talk about it because we're gonna be looking at one or two wells. If option three, that means that well is good, then I would still like to understand a cost to get a separate well in by the hockey arena.
So I, I would, I would take that as a separate motion if I could so that we can move forward on this and then, and then say, "We need to talk about either way. It's a two wells or an additional well for the hockey rink or for the skating rinks." It would be for both of them. All right. So we have a motion to authorize Markwell at their earliest convenience and hopefully it's sooner than mid-November. He said he would do what he could to fit us into the schedule. But to pull the pump, investigate the condition of the well, the capacity of the water, the capacity of the water, and then either move forward with half horse option one or one horse variable speed option three, as is appropriate. So we have a motion from Councilmember Blake.
Sorry.
A second by Councilmember Rainville. Any other questions or discussion? And then we'll take separately a motion to investigate a well near the skating rinks. Any other questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So then Lori, will you, do you want to get ahold of Ron then and let him know we, let us know what he finds as soon as possible? All right, so then Councilmember Alders, you want to make a second motion as far as the potential for another well?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we investigate how we get a separate well up at the hockey arena to support the, to support that ice hockey operation in the wintertime.
I agree.
All right, so you made the motion, Councilmember Blake.
I'm taking it.
Okay, so Councilmember Alders made the motion, Councilmember Blake made the second. And I would think if we're putting in another well, we would also take a look at what our option would be to run off that well to anything else that we need, whether it's the fire station or the fields. If we're doing something untreated, I think we should consider new lines to the fields rather than putting treated water out in the fields. So as, as part of that investigation of a well, then what else should we be servicing from it? Because if we're, if we're pushing something from here down to the fire station, maybe it's better to just come into the parking lot and come up into it. But as part of that, we could say what's this, what can we use this well for? Is that a reasonable addition?
I, I agree. I guess what I'm just thinking about is the, what's the iron level of the water need to be for the hockey rink and stuff? Is that a, I'm not a hockey player, does it matter?
I, I would say just from equipment, a hose and, and other, Ron's saying if you can keep around 90 feet, you get better water.
Okay.
If you're going deeper.
Probably do some post-secondary treatment while you're spraying that if you need to with a cover, a little bit or something.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Red ice or white ice, I'll play on it either way.
If it freezes.
We want white.
If it freezes, Lori.
A little scary, red ice is scary.
Five days in the hole in water.
All right, so all those in favor of the motion, you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There you go.
Red ice.
Are we done?
No, now we have that. The long part is me.
I gotta go home.
I'm just getting warmed, warmed up, Linda.
I'm sorry.
All right. Anybody else need a break? Had it for an hour and 20 minutes. Of course he won, he was the judge. He wasn't the judge, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
He had a.
I brought my kids through and, um, listen, saying, well, this is Joel's, my daughter-in-law said, I mean, my granddaughter said to me, I can't vote, that's too scary. She said, I've got little children, I have to vote for a nicer one.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Linda, by and large, the females voted for the cute one. The males voted for mine.
Oh, yeah, I went with you, though. I just love that scary stuff.
His wife doesn't like it in the bedroom, though. Hangs it on the wall in the bedroom, she doesn't.
Oh, I am, actually. Why the children? Do they mind the girls?
A, The Witch took second place to The Swedish Chef.
Okay.
So The Swedish Chef won.
And who was, who was?
Rita Greenberg, my niece, won The Swedish Chef by two votes over The Witch. It's a super tight race throughout the day. They were neck and neck.
There's only one team, right?
There's only one team, yeah.
I guess for quite a clarification, you guys are discussing the scarecrow contest from the Nalthen Heritage Festival, nothing that was on the agenda.
That was just a filler while we were taking a short break.
So come on, Lori, this is Gus's scarecrow contest.
If anybody clicks in mid-stream here, they're going to go, what?
All right, so we're, we're now on to the budget. The, been a lot of changes since, since the last time we talked. Now, we have a CIP, which is why Shane is here, Shane Nelson from Engineering Firm, to talk about some numbers he's given us for the limiting numbers, preliminary numbers for next year. We have some rearrangements on, for our discussion last time we were together. And actually, we thought we were maybe going down, and it looks like we actually went up. We have a, a budget presentation from the fire chief that shows the, the numbers. And if you saw, it's actually, for clarification, the chief sent this out. So you do have a memo in front of you. And if you look at the numbers, the chief corrected this, this is for the 2022 budget proposal. The column headers say 2020 and 2021, that action should be 2021 and 2022. And then you'd be looking for this one. This came up. So the chief's here to answer any questions on what he has proposed. In our last discussion, we looked at the projected fire budget for 2021, and we looked at lowering that because it wasn't all utilized. What I think we failed to consider when we suggested that is, one, the chief had actually put in a higher number than we had to begin with. So we had 276, the chief had 282. He explained in his memo that actually he, he had missed something in his budget proposal, and his recommendation actually comes in at 288,625. We were looking at taking him down to 256. So we have a major discrepancy there. We, at the time, didn't, we had a $900,000 number in there for roads, but we didn't have what we were going to do with those roads. We now have a preliminary number of 490,000 plus additional maintenance activities for 2022, which would come in at 780,000. That changes what we talked about last time. Last time, we, we asked about staffing, and we were told we would get by with what we've had. And now we have somebody who's interested in coming on full-time, which changes things. So we thought we might be going down, we actually went up a little bit. That doesn't take into consideration the discrepancy we have with the fire department and the additional monies of, for additional maintenance activities for roads of almost $300,000. So that being said, we have to have something to the county by Thursday. We're in between a rock and a hard place. It's tough to, to make these kind of decisions with other people's money on limited information and very limited time. So I'm not sure where to start. I think the biggest rock, obviously, is, is what the chief's got going on here. But, so Shane doesn't have to sit around for all of our arm wrestling. I would recommend that we talk first about the roads so we understand what Shane has given us and so we can decide what we want to do with those numbers. Is the council okay with that?
Perfect.
All right. So Shane sent an email in September 22nd to the city office. As requested, we reviewed the 2022 capital improvement plan from the city of Nalthen. Our review consisted of reviewing previous five-year capital improvement drafts, coordination, communication with the city of Ramsey, and physically driving the roads to perform a windshield inspection and noting the conditions of the road. For 2022, we'd recommend the following. Just to make sure everybody understands that sentence, the city of Ramsey came into this discussion because the south end of the Rogers Lake area did not get done this year because we're hoping to tie it in with Ramsey's road improvements. Shane contacted them and 10 years out, and I don't know if any of you have driven Waco from, from, from County 27 up. It's like driving across the moon. And there is nothing in their plan for at least 10 years out. No patching, no resurfacing, nothing. So I will be calling the, just because I'm interested, I'm going to call the council member that serves that ward and say, really? Maybe you should drive your streets and go talk to your council and your, your department. But for right now, we were looking at not doing anything down there so we could tie in with them. There's also, if you're familiar with the south end of our city, there's another spot we have to come in through Ramsey. You come in at about 179th, and we, the city of Nalthen begins at 181st, and this is Urquiem, so it's a, it's a cul-de-sac. And so you don't, you know when you switch by the road. We went down and did some, some cold patching there earlier this year, you know, a month ago. But we thought that again would come in because it's another bad neighborhood. Not as bad as Waco, but it's bad. And that's not in their plans. There is one other road down there that you have to come in from Ramsey, that you come in off Green Valley Road, and again, you go through Ramsey neighborhood, and then you hit R Street. And then that is.
Uh, it's Barium Street, Mr. Mayor.
Barium. And so that one is on their capital improvement plan for 2026.
That's correct.
And, and that one is not as bad a shape as the other two. At, at least as I recall. When Shane says he did a windshield inspection, he drove the roads. This does not, the same as going out when he did the road plan where he literally went out and took pictures and devised a plan. This didn't look at ditches, didn't look at culverts. He just went and said, here's the roads that you see and what they could use. So that is background. Ramsey's not going to do anything until at least 2026 on the one, Barium, and the other two aren't going to be touched at all in their 10-year plan at this point. So with that, it helps you maybe understand a little bit more of what, what has been proposed here. Secondarily, as background, by Met Council estimates, we were about 4,900 residents, give or take. By the census that we just received back, we are 4,500 residents. We thought we were just about, with a few of these new housing developments we have coming in, just about to go over on the 5,000. And, and if we did that, we would qualify for Minnesota State Aid, Road Aid, which is significant. And the state aid roads are those that are through roads. And so roads that are, are considered there are 185th, Clifton. If you're familiar with 185th, off of Nalthen Boulevard, and it jogs north on Clifton and becomes 187th, goes out to Cleary. So County Road to County Road is a state aid road. From 185th North to Viking, again, County, County 22, that Jasper is considered a state aid road. So those, we were planning on significant funds from the state to counter that. If you've driven those roads, very large parcels and not a lot of homes. When we did Rogers Lake and we did Old Viking, we had 60 to 65 homes, and the cost was distributed much more equitably. If we had to fully redo those roads, it would, it would probably exceed our 429 consideration, and they would not be able to gain their value back, and they'd have a legitimate reason to, to fight it. If you've been getting any of the calls I've been getting, people are seeing Ebony and Garnett being repaired, and they can't figure out why 185th, 187th, and Clifton aren't being repaired. And they, if you, if you take your older car on there, you'll get, get a workout and no shocks. So with that being said, Shane's looked at that, we had a discussion. If we can't get to those roads soon, what are we going to do? He's proposed something we've never done here before called micro-surfacing. And to my knowledge, we've never done it here.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
So this would be patching first, and then a micro-surfacing of about 3/8 inch thick of the tumors overlay. And it would get us how long? Expect something like that will appease people?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think it's a, you know, the, the application schedule, I guess, if you will, is probably every 10 or 15 years, but really, you can only do it so many times in the pavement's life cycle. Really, the, the patching on those higher volume roads would be to kind of, you know, the severely depressed areas to correct those. And then the micro-surfacing, the, the main advantage is it kind of fills in a lot of the, the depressions or the imperfections with the road, so it greatly improved the ride. It doesn't add a lot of strength. So it's not going to, it's not going to extend the pavement life by adding strength. However, for whatever pavement life is left, it will improve the ride. And so this is a practice that used to be done a lot, like on, you generally see it on higher volume roadways, you know, counties that aid highways, maybe on Highway 10 or Highway 65. And it's something that is being done more and more now on local roadways and even in residential neighborhoods ever since we've had the, the problem with seal coating our roads and some delamination occurring. So it's, it's something that's becoming more and more common, and it's, I mean, it does, it almost, it looks like a new road after they're, they're done.
For sure, during the time.
Right.
When they, so in, in, when Main Street going through Anoka, is that micro-surfacing? Or are they actually putting down thicker, do you know?
Main Street and Anoka, I do not know.
I'm sorry, not Main Street, Ferry Street.
Oh, they knew what they just laid down.
Past the fairgrounds?
Huh? Now, from Main Street.
It goes down past the fairgrounds.
They're starting at the bridge and, and working their way up to pass the fairground.
That's really a nice road right now.
But they did that pretty quick, and I didn't see them actually resurfacing.
Is that micro?
But you're not familiar with.
That could have been, I mean, that's right by my office, so I could, I could drive by and take a look.
Because all of a sudden, and for those of you that aren't familiar, for a long time, we've discussed seal coating, which is laying down a liquid product and putting gravel on top of it. You drive on it, then you come sweep up the rest of the gravel.
Yeah.
And, and there's been a lot of debate in the city, should we do that? And El Criv was doing it, Anoka County was doing it. And so we talked about extending the life with that. It looks like a resurfaced road, you push new gravel back into it, and it, many cities were doing it. And a couple of years back, what changed? I mean, it was a change in how they do it or the material?
Well, I, I think what happened is some of the cities that had a seal coat program started having problems with what was called delamination. And it was basically the, the surface of the road was.
Coming up in strips.
Right. Yeah, so it's, I mean, our, our theory is that the oil became so good and so tight that it no longer let moisture through the pavement. And so in the wintertime, moisture would get trapped underneath that layer of oil. And then that would cause the, the, the top of the road to pop and, and it, but it happened, I mean, it was, uh, uh, in a, in a, about a five-year period, it happened just widespread over the, the, all the metro cities. So a lot of cities discontinued their seal coating programs. Some cities that didn't experience delamination are still seal coating, but it's a lot fewer than, than.
Anyway, that, that's been a discussion over years, should we seal coat, patch and seal coat? And we decided until they figure out why this is happening, we weren't going to bring it back up to the council. So this is the first time we've seen the, the micro-surfacing, So this is the first time we've seen the micro-surfacing, which would be a similar effect without the consequences that we're seeing right now in some cities. You'd still have to patch, but you just put a thin layer over it. It would not, as Shane said, not strengthen the road, but would smooth out the ride. Councilmember Alders.
And this is a, this is a micro film, this is not a milling film, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, this is simply fixing the. Do you crack seal before this?
I would not recommend crack sealing immediately beforehand.
Okay. But any patching we need to do would be done, and then this would be over the top of the patching.
That is correct.
So it would look like a continuous flow of batuminous. It would just be instead of a wear course of an inch and a half thick, you're talking 3/8 of an inch, which is pretty tiny.
It is.
So it sounds like we haven't seen before, and so in this, there's two costs, capital improvement, a preliminary estimate, which would be split with the businesses or residences on those. And then the second part of this, batuminous patching, you asked for 185th, Clifton, 187th. That would be, need to be in the city's budget for road improvements, separate from anything we would assess. Councilmember Rainville, you had a question?
I do, to Engineer, to Shane. So this 3/8 of an inch, are there other options, or is that just pretty standard?
That's pretty standard.
That's pretty, all right, thank you. And then the second question I have is, we would do patching prior to, whose responsibility is it to do the patching? Is that part of this dollar amount, or would that be additional?
It would be additional.
And who would typically do that patching?
If it was a project that we knew was going to be micro-surfaced, we could include that in the project. You know, we could also receive quotes separately as kind of a larger pavement patching project, I guess, and just have it ready or completed before the micro-surfacing was completed. And really, the patching, I mean, we kind of have a couple of things, I think, in the next four or five years to look at. So like the mayor indicated, we originally had the rest of the Rogers Lake area scheduled for 2022. And with the city of Ramsey not also having it scheduled for 2022, it required us to shift some things around. So really, for the next four years, we have a lot of roads that are in need of overlays. You know, a lot of roads that, a lot of our roads were built in the early 2000s to the mid 2000s. We probably, I didn't tally up the miles, but we probably have 10 or so miles, if not more, of roads built during that time period. They're all approaching 20 years old. And if we don't do something to add strength to them and extend that pavement's life soon, we'll be looking at reconstruction on all these roads. So I would recommend, you know, actually, in the year 2026, once we, you know, if we kind of keep up our overlay program, similar to what I proposed in previous years, I would anticipate that we'd be through all of our roads, and we really won't have much in the way of projects after the year 2026, we'd more or less be caught up. So as the mayor indicated, I drove a lot of the roads, and based on their visual condition, I kind of rescheduled some of the roads. For next year, my recommendation would be the, you know, just right here in the commercial park, mainly because of the age of the roads and the heavy traffic that they receive. In addition, Wild Run East, which is 190th Avenue and Vacana Street, they, those roads, I mean, it was some pretty severe exposed aggregate. You can tell the pavement's getting really dry. And it looked to me like it's in that kind of timeframe where if something's not done fairly soon, we're probably going to miss our opportunity.
Just to clarify, Shane, it's Wild Run West.
That is correct, I'm sorry.
And Vacuna is right now under concept plan because there's 80 acres that's looking to be developed between Vacuna and 194th. And they would be tying Vacuna into that new road. Just, you know, just for the discussion of that. If that development goes in within the next year, I would think when they put in the new extension of Vacuna, you'd want to tie those together.
That would be ideal, yes.
If you're familiar with where that is, Wild Run East is 190th goes between Burns Parkway and Baugh Street. And about 2/3 of the way from Burns Parkway is the north-south street Vacuna that goes into the property that was just sold and is under concept preview right now.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Shane, can I just hear the clarification? So your, so the memo you sent out is for the major projects, and then now you're talking about overlay? Some maintenance for overlays, or what do you?
There's two things. So in the first part of the memo, these are overlays that would be assessed.
Right, that's reconstruction, the first part.
Yeah, we're not going to do as much as we've done on these other projects.
So but the second part, that's not, that's what you're talking about now?
No.
No.
That was what I was talking about at the beginning with the micro-surfacing. And that's all out of the road improvement budget, that's not going to be assessed.
Right, right, and that's all fine. But now what are you talking about? You're talking about overlays that come out of the general fund, basically.
Now we're back to the top part.
Oh, you are? Okay, I'm just very confused with this conversation.
Yeah, in the background, and I might have contributed that, in the background, I was trying to say we haven't done micro-surfacing before, so.
Oh, I see.
We were looking at things that we would have to add to the budget because there's no assessment for that.
Right, and so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a solution for that, so you don't have to add it to your general fund. You have transferred in over, almost $900,000, a little over that, into the Road Improvement Fund, and you can use that money to pay for those projects, but it's up to you.
So that $900,000 that we, where did we find that?
So you have been, you transferred money in, back in 2018, you transferred $707,000. I think you were setting up your Road Improvement Fund so that you didn't have to issue debt every year.
Yep, that was the intention.
So you could actually tap into that for this additional batuminous patching and the micro-surfacing. And then, you know, continue to contribute to it as the years go on, so you can build it back up. But in a pinch, instead of adding back into your general fund and increasing your levy, you could use those monies.
Yeah, that's obviously the discussion that we're trying to get to here because, and I think it goes back to discussion we've had previously this fall and summer, is, you know, that's the value of the capital discussion in March and April.
Right.
Not three days before the budgets do.
Right. And we, yes, and we did try to schedule a meeting, and we were not able to.
So the, and when we had previous discussions, you know, we had placeholders of $900,000 for 2022 in the capital plan for roadwork. And then subsequent years, approximately $400,000 for as long as we were able, whatever we saw. You know, you've got a longer capital plan that we haven't seen yet. But my concern is we haven't looked at the culverts or the ditches, which we just put on the capital plan the last time we met. We don't have a number for it yet because we haven't tasked Shane with that yet. But in the road plan that Shane originally did, and I don't know if you'd have a chance to update that, I haven't seen anything updated in a long time, I don't know if you've even looked at it, if the city staff's updated it. But we used to go through the road plan and say, are these still the roads we want to do? And the discussion was, don't wait for them to get bad, get to them before they deteriorate to that point, which I think is what you're doing here, is saying, these aren't bad enough for milling, reclaim. These are, let's just do a batuminous overlay. And that was part of the road plan. We never did follow up on any of the ditch work that's necessary on that road plan, and culverts never made it into that. So culverts have been reactionary, when one collapses or plugs up, we deal with culverts. Ditches, we haven't touched, and we just haven't had staffing to go back and do ditch maintenance. But if you look at the road plan, there's some that literally the farm fields come right up to the road, and there is no ditch. And that will affect pavement life. There's others that don't drain properly anymore because something's gotten in between them and the culverts downstream. So we do need to make sure that as we utilize some of those $900,000 that we have in the road fund, is this part of that. So we have to have a long-term discussion on capital, roads, ditches and culverts. And while the preliminary of X number, $900,000 for next year and $400,000 after that was placeholders, this is helpful to say, here's what you can do. Now, this is again, as you say, as you drove by, I don't know the last time you looked at the road plan and how consistent from the last time you looked at it to what we're actually seeing today. Have you had any opportunity, or?
Mr. Mayor, I, when you say the road plan, I think you're talking about the road study that was completed in 2012 or 2013.
And we've updated it.
Yeah.
Twice since then.
Yeah, and kind of what I do is, you know, every year, I kind of look and use a color-coded map to look out for this year and the next four years. And so I did look, I have a color-coded map from 2017, one from 2018, one from 2019. And I would really like to, if we can work towards doing some five-year planning, where we adopt a five-year plan and then review and update that each year as necessary, because conditions of roads do change. And, you know, sometimes a, looking five years out, the recommendation might be for a overlay. And a couple of years after that, we drive that road and find out this road's no longer in good enough condition for an overlay, now needs a reclaim and pave. And so things do change with that five-year plan, but it at least helps us, again, kind of look out into that a little bit further horizon. And it also helps us identify specifically roads that may have an overlay within the next couple of years. We do not want to be crack-filling those cracks because for some reason, that fresh crack-fill material, you know, that crack-filling material is applied, they melt it, basically, they heat it up to 300 degrees, it comes out of the wand as a liquid, and then it goes in the crack and it cools and it becomes rubber. Well, when we have that fresh crack-filling material and we put 300-degree asphalt mix on top of that, it does the same thing, it melts the crack-filling material. And I think, I don't know if you recall, but a couple of years ago, with our overlay program, we had all of those cracks show up. And by planning for the next few years, that would help us maybe change our crack-filling practices.
I remember the calls. And that's why, you know, as we've been talking about this this summer, and it goes back to, you know, when we're talking about communication, by not having this when the understanding is that maybe you've been tasked with this, but we don't know that. But we had a road study, and that was part of the discussion. Because it did come up earlier in this year when we were talking about in Public Works, how do we decide which ones we're doing the crack sealing on? Right now, we just take half the city and do it. And half the city doesn't all need it. And part of that, as you say, shouldn't be done, you know, just before we're going to do an overlay program. And that's what I'm trying to refine the discussion there to say, do we understand when we should be crack sealing, when we shouldn't be? And if we have a five-year plan, I've been telling people, we've been told we have a plan, go to the website and see where you fit in, so that we can try and warn neighborhoods that it's coming your way in three years. And it's not such a surprise when they get their first letter that we're now doing your neighborhood. The idea would be to say, here's our long-term plan, five years out. Understanding we have to review it because a culvert caves in, something erupts underneath, you know, or wears differently than we thought it was going to. That's why we were doing this, the road study updates, to look at, is that still consistent? But right now, we don't have a solid five-year plan, which you're saying.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
And so when we're trying to budget for that, we don't really know what, if it's just overlays or milling or completely redo. We were thinking between Ebony and Garnett and Rogers Lake, we may have gotten through the worst of the redoing the entire road.
Correct, I think the only road that we have left that we haven't gotten to yet is Watercrest Boulevard. That's in really tough shape, and we had originally talked about doing that at the same time as 185th, Clifton and 187th, you know, at some point when we receive our municipal state aid money.
Right, because Watercrest had been on the plan earlier, and we said, since we're this close to state aid, we could tie it in 187th there.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders?
So we said the Met Council said it's 4,900, census is 4,500, which one does the state go by?
4,500.
Okay, so.
The Met Council's an estimate. It helped us when we got our rescue funds, because they had us at 47, 41. So we got more money. But the census is the determining factor.
Mr. Mayor, so what's our proposal here? We've talked a lot about roads, we don't have a great five-year plan. Shane's given us a proposal, it's about $780,000 for the estimate that he has done for next year.
Well, and my point is if Vacuna is going to be done within a year or two, do we want to spend $210,000 on 190th and Vacuna this next year? Iguana, Farid, 199th, you guys drive that every day, is that? If you've driven 187th and 185th, it's rough shape. So the question is, and again, I'd never seen micro-surfacing, so I wasn't familiar with what that would do for us. But that's, does not include the patching. And I think just driving the Clifton, you know, 187th, 185th and Clifton, there's a fair amount of patching necessary. Probably Jasper, too, I don't drive that as much, but.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, there's, I mean, there's a lot of different strategies that we can use to preserve our pavement, and a lot of it depends on what our end goal is. My goal is always trying to get the, like, if there are portions of the road that are failing earlier than the others, my goal is to not build those sections up so that they last for another 40 years. My goal is usually to make a repair such that the entire road lasts for about the same amount of time. And if the pavement gets really bad, and you know, the severe elevator cracking, well, then normally, you know, the normal repair, the longer-term repair is to cut it out and patch. That's also more expensive. There's also an option to do kind of an overlay on pavement that's depressed, but maybe not really elevator cracked, or it doesn't have those large gaps in it. And I've used that treatment practice for the last 10 or 15 years, and it's, I mean, think of it. think of it not as a repair, but as a Band-Aid to get that street to last another 10 or 15 years. And so the, there's, there's options for patching, like Waco Street's a, a prime example. A lot of that, and that's kind of another example of what delamination looks like, because those potholes aren't full depth. Those, those potholes, the, the, uh, you mentioned it, it's like driving on the moon, but those potholes are only half inch deep to an inch deep maybe, uh, not full depth. And so a lot of those areas, I think we could, uh, get a lot more life out of those roads by doing some overlays, just milling the ends and overlaying. And, and that's not something that I would recommend we assess for, cause it's.
Right, I was gonna say, that's not something that they would accept assessing for.
Right, and that's, that's why I'm recommending the bituminous patching. Now, with, with all kind of, with all this being said, um, as long as we have a reasonable budget amount for the next four or five years, I think we can shift things one way or another. You know, a year to one way or another. These are the strategies that I think we should use for the next four or five years. But if the council feels that $800,000 is too much for the year 2022, I think we can move some things around, um, and do them in, in '23 or '24, if that's the desire of the council. I think the, the big picture thing is we just have to have a reasonable budget. So $100,000 a year isn't going to catch us up. Uh, and I think, uh, based on the numbers that I've heard tonight, uh, I think we're budgeting more than that. $400,000 a year probably will come really close to catching us up over the next five or six years.
Councilmember Rainbow.
So I, I'm just, the more I'm reading your memo, and I didn't read it till today, cause I was busy over the weekend. Shane, you have the biti, bitim, bitim, the patching, um, at $120,000 on Jasper, 185th, Clinton and 187th. And then you have 184th, Tiger, Yerkey, Waco and Waco Drive. So if I take half of that, 120, so 60,000. And then we have two of the major drags, they're Jasper and 185th. And I had asked earlier about the patching. But you've really actually already given us pricing for patching of those roads that we would do prior to the micro-surfacing on Jasper and the Clifton 186th. So there really wouldn't be any more expense, cause you've already given us that dollar mark. If I'm reading this, 120 is to cover all of the patching on the streets that you mentioned.
Uh, Councilwoman Rainbow, that, that is correct, with the exception of I didn't actually go out and measure patching lengths and distances or, or, or receive quotes from contractors. I'm just recommending having some money in the budget, a sizable amount, because I think by spending some money, doing some patching now, we're going to prevent having to rebuild those roads sooner rather than later. So, uh, you know, one example is Tiger and 184th Avenue. A few years ago, uh, the recommended maintenance for that road was a, an overlay. I drove that last week and there's some areas that are pretty bad now. I don't think an overlay is going to cut it anymore. At least I wouldn't assess, I wouldn't want the city to assess for an overlay because we're going to have a lot of reflective cracking that happens after that overlay is, is completed. And, and when the residents are paying for that, they, they, uh, they get really upset when they see that reflective cracking, which is normal. It's going to happen every time we do an overlay. Um, but I do think by doing, you know, maybe by spending 20,000 or 30,000 dollars and doing kind of like a skin patch over the top of that, I think maybe we can extend that pavement life, maybe another six to 10 years. I mean, some of the, some of the roads that I've overlaid that have been in pretty tough shape, I mean, they've lasted another 10 years.
Well, some of the patching we've done, because we've gone in and, and deep patched and repaired base, has, was, you know, it lasted more than 10 years and they had a tough time pulling it up.
Right.
So depending on how much, how deep we go in the patch. My, my concern is, and I, and Councilmember Alders, I understand, you know, frustration, we've got to make a decision here. I've never heard of the micro-surfacing before and we're three days from getting a budget in. Um, we're talking about, I don't know if you guys have ever driven, or if you look at these roads that, since this milling came out last week, did you go out and drive Tiger and 184th? Did you, did you actually see what these are like so that when we talk about patching, you understand? Cause like I said, i- if you've gotten the calls, you know, I've told people, you know, if they're calling me, you make sure you call the office and call everybody else in the council because I don't want to be the only one coming in here and saying there's, there's three people down on 185th or Clifton or wherever it might be saying this and being the only one that's actually driven it. So I, I think it's important that, that we understand the, the depth of this and that's why these discussions should be happening early in the year, not three days before the budget's due.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to make a clarification. Tonight is really all about doing a preliminary levy and setting your maximum levy. You do not have to adopt a budget until December. So you do have October and November to have more detailed discussions about budget. It's just the preliminary levy that has to be resolution for tonight. We can adopt a proposed budget and, and, and change it all we want. It's just that you cannot increase your levy after you do your preliminary levy.
And, and I understand that, uh, but in 13 years we've been a city, we've never, once we put in our preliminary levy, have ever even talked about the budget again, until December. And then it's like, okay, we already put it in, the notices have gone out, here's your preliminary. The taxpayers see what we're planning on raising it and.
And that would not change. Your preliminary levy would only go down, it would not go up. And so if, if, you know, you want to set a, a preliminary levy high enough to incorporate the, these roads, then you can have that discussion. But as I said, you can actually use your capital funds that you have available to do these additional projects that you, if you wish to do any or all of them. And so it doesn't, it won't impact your levy this year. It'll be a larger discussion next year going forward if you plan on doing $400,000 of, of, of this micro-surfacing or this bituminous, uh, patching that you're not assessing for.
And, and I, and I understand that.
Okay.
You know, and, and our discussions for, for multiple meetings now has been, um, we were looking at, at a, a proposed budget increase over last year's proposed budget versus last year's actual. And, and we're still sitting here tonight without even talking about the fire department yet or these, you know, the roads. And I appreciate we can use money that we intelligently set aside.
Yep, yep.
As we heard at our last meeting, we have a double A-plus rating because we've been very prudent over many years to get here. And I, I don't want to take, I don't want to take liberties with that rating or other people's money. But we still coming in, we're still at, at 20.6 increase over our proposed, or our actual, posed, actual 2021 versus our proposed 2022 budget. And so we're still going from 1.6 million to 1.9 million and that's what we levy. And while true, it's only 3% over last year's proposed budget, it's still 21% over last year's actual. And, and that's the discussion we've been having for, for three or four budget discussions here. And we keep coming in with the same number.
Mr. Mayor, are you saying it's, it's 21% over, over the 2020 actual?
No, 2021 projected expenditures.
And that is very low, you know, um, because of several factors this year. You're, not only did you, you eliminated $80,000 of transfers out that you normally did. So your transfers out are down by $80,000. Um, and also you had, uh, one staff member that's been out. Um, there was, uh, you budgeted to have a full-time person and you did not have a full-time person in your administration. And so that, that saved you $50,000 right there. Now we're saying we're, we're trying to re-budget for that full-time staff. I don't think you can look at the 21 actual and say that's your real true cost.
So, so Lori, just let me interrupt you there because that's the question we've been asking since July.
And I think I did mention that, that your budget is low, uh, uh, or your actual, your projected actual is much lower than what you budgeted for several factors. Number one, the fire department is not spending what they thought they were going to spend or what they had budgeted to spend or what we had budgeted them to spend, they're much lower than that. The administration is much lower than that. Now fires coming back and saying that they're, they're going to spend that money next year. And so their, their budget is not changing to be at their propos, at their, um,
Projected.
Projected.
And, and I, I understand all that and that's why the, the task was, what are we missing? So when, when the question was, if we took the projected 2021 actuals and we asked in July, do you think those numbers are good? And saying, based on what we know in July, yes, we think they're good, we projected out through the end of the year.
Right.
So then we went two more months, July and August, and we had, we had, um, actuals there that we could adjust.
Yep.
And the task was, when we, when we had the 18 action items, um, on the 31st of August, the, the big question was, are we missing anything? And, and the question was, is there something here that, that happened in 2021 that artificially lowered our projected? Was there something here that's going to happen in 2022 that we need to allocate for? And, and we haven't seen anything until this week. And like I said, we're, we're three days from the, the due date. And, and while I understand we can change our budget and we can lower the levy, I'm not comfortable, because I've never seen it happen in 13 years, that we've even had a discussion or, and we've never lowered it. And what happens is you get through this and it's like, I don't want to talk about that anymore, I want to go on to, to do other things. We're trying, we're, we're having trouble finding a time to talk about communication. We've had Liz off on things that she's been working on for months. I don't see a whole lot of openings coming between now and December to have these types of discussions and to say, well, we put our levy in and, and just let it go with that. Because we didn't get the answers that what did we miss in 2021 that we need to account for other than there was somebody, uh, out in both Public Works and an office staff.
Yep.
And we increased hours in office staff for somebody else to cover for a, a portion of that. And we understood in Public Works that that was not being addressed. We, we hired some part-timers, but it wasn't covering that. What else did we need to know in 2022 that wasn't obvious to us? Because we don't have the details you have. That's why I said I'd like to have these details, cause it makes it a lot easier to say. I understand that now, the trend has been this, we bottomed out and that's artificially low. But what, when I, when we keep coming back to 20% over that projected actual, and the only thing I see in that is the, the significant Public Works salary reduction, which we, we put back in there. So we said, take 2021 projected actual, add 10, 12% to it and put in the fire chief, can we come out with a 2022 projected budget that matches the 2021 projected budget? So instead of going up 21%, we're going up from the 1.6 to the 1.87.
Mr. Mayor, and, and, um, I apologize, but I did not hear that question or see that question in regards to what are we missing? Because I'll tell you, you were, you're missing $100,000 for the sheriff contract increase. That has to be included. And the fire department is going from 182,000 projected to 288,000 that, that he has for, for a budget. So that's $100,000, that's $200,000 right there. So if you take the 1.6 million that I've projected and you add 200,000, we're now at 1.8. And then there's the, the full-time person being out and, and the other full-time position. Those two are probably another 100,000, we're now at 1.9.
So, so what we had, and, and this was the discussion we had again, August, that's where these action items came out in, uh, prior to that, um, that was, you know, item 10 on here. Uh, look at the 2021 projected, add 10%, how close can we get to the 2021 budget with all of these changes that we just, just explained? The 60, the extra $60,000 for the sheriff, cause we already had the, the half the sheriff in there.
Right.
Um, and we, we looked at, what did we miss? And we, we understand the Public Works was a significant hit, so we, we put that back in. We, we had, you know, I'm looking at it, we had.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just explained to you, from the 1.6 million, and I understand that you're saying I, I didn't explain this earlier, but if you look at the 1.6 million projected and you add in the $100,000 increase from the sheriff, the $100,000 increase from what the fire department is.
Again, we're just hearing that tonight.
Right, I, I understand that, I, I get that, I, I.
That's my frustration, we're three days from the budget, or the levy going to the county and we're just getting new information on something that we should have been working on since June.
Well, and, and it's not new information, I mean, it was all, this has all been given to you. So I don't know, I understand why you say it's new information. The, and I sent out the detail now this last time, so you have all the detail that I have. And you can see all the line items and the, and the, and the detail there, so.
But, but in that, we talked about reducing the, you know, it, it's like the things we, you know, again, I have 18 items here, we talked about.
And we went over those 18 items two weeks.
But we're still, we still came in at 14,000.
And that's right, and, and I explained that in the memo, how, how that happened. So I don't, I don't know where you want us to go here. I mean, obviously, um, you know, if, if you want to decrease the, the levy more, which I would not recommend, then, you know, and, and you want, and if you want to dive into the budget more in-depth than you have, then I would suggest that you, um, you adopt a preliminary levy and a, and a proposed budget and then you do meet in October or November, so.
Well, and that's, that's why we met on, on August 31st and September.
Right, and I wasn't here August 31st, I was in Germany, so.
It sounds like we had this discussion on September 7th as well, though. Councilmember Alders.
Well, when we left last week, the two acts, cause we talked through all 18 items.
Yeah.
And we got to the end of it and we said, okay, we need to find 40 grand.
Right.
We said, the fire department gets a $20,000 cut and Lori gets a, gets a $20,000 cut. Go back and tell us what that means. Because at a $40,000 cut, it was revenue neutral. Now we come back and we know more and it probably wasn't a $40,000 cut last time because we know more. So, and then Shane's whole discussion on roads, which is great, was, uh, what is the $900,000 that we have in there? Because it was earmarked, it, is that what we're going to spend or not? So whether or not we drove and understand what micro milling is, I think tonight is, we had 900,000 in there.
Right.
He's proposing.
700.
780, some of that is capital, some of that is expense. So if we agree that it goes in, the buckets are right, I don't know that we need to make the call. I think the bottom line is, is we got 220, 290 in expense and we got 490 in capital. So between that, Shane's plan, and I don't disagree that we should have a five-year plan and Shane should be helping us develop that plan. If he knows that next year I got 500,000 in capital and I got 300,000 in expense, I will put together a plan for you and then I will tell you what you should do in '23 and '24 and '25, if that's how we want to play this. But it is, like you said, 8:30, this is the fourth budget meeting and we're still trying to figure out why the sheriff's department is $113,000 more. So it's 100 grand more for the sheriff, the fire department's 100 grand more and it's 100 grand more for our ops team, now that they're fully staffed and going to be back in the office next year, so.
And, and that discussion right there, where did we ever come up with, what is this fully-staffed op team, ops team going to do? Two weeks ago, that wasn't even a consideration and now we're, we're putting another full-timer on without knowing what currently is being done or what is planned to be done.
And if we say no, then great, then cut it back. But that's where we're at right now.
Exactly.
And we can say, sheriff department, we want to delay you guys six months and it's not going to be 114. And we can say, Sheriff Department, we want to delay you guys six months and it's not going to be 114,000. It can be 50 or 60. But the original proposal was, it's 114,000 more. If we think the fire department isn't going to run fully-staffed all next year, then it's not $100,000 more. But that's not what we're budgeting to.
Okay, so let's let's go back. The road thing comes out of it because, while again, I I want to protect our AA+ and that takes long-term planning. But that being said, we know that if we decide we need to do that, we can have that discussion in October, November. If we need to do that, we have money put aside. The intention of putting that aside was to build that up so we didn't have to bond in the future. I don't want to spend it down now and blow our long-term plan. But we can have that discussion because that doesn't affect the levy.
Right, or it could if you wanted to put it in the general fund.
Yeah, but but at this point, I wouldn't put it in the general fund when we already have other categories there if we have some built up. But I'd like to have the discussion. Why do we build it up? What was the plan for its use? Just like when you look at a capital plan, you look at, we're putting this much aside because we know this truck is coming or that expenditure is coming. And if we want to pay cash, we put so much aside per year until it's paid off. So I I don't want to jettison that just because we built up some funds and say we can use them for something else. But I don't want to put it in the general fund. But that being said, at our last meeting, we said, we we wanted to come down 47,000. So we were at at 1.6 on the projected actual. The 2021 was was 1.872. And we wanted to come down 47. We compromised on on 40. Uh, and and again, one of those 10.30 at night decisions, which I think kills us. We just said, the the fire department didn't use all their budget this year. So we can take 20 out of there and and 10 out of parks and 10's out of 10 out of public works. We get proposal tonight that we're actually increasing parks. We didn't know last time where our our part-timers were on on parks and on on recycling. Um, but we're going to increase parks instead of going down. We're going to, uh, have a different discussion on the fire department. But at that time, disregarding roads, we had 1,872 versus 1,600 projected. Which left us about $280,000. Of that, 114 was the sheriff. That left us 165,000 dollars, 155,000 dollars. Um, that was 100, actually 165,000. And that was a 10-plus percent increase. Could we make up the rest of this on that? And so really what we're looking at is, how do we come down $40,000? And we didn't. We're we're still back up at 1,928.
Right, right.
And and that's what I don't understand. Because we're back there before hearing what the what the fire department has proposed. Now, I'm okay saying that that somewhere we pulled some money out, somewhere we put some money in. I don't know exactly where because I got this late last week and I I was out of town last week and I was out of commission this weekend. Uh, but I'm looking at, you know, almost $300,000 below, uh, budget last year. And if we throw in the sheriff and we throw in some of these other things, again, roads are out of it. Uh, now we have to have the discussion on the fire department. We're still, we're only looking at $40,000 difference and we're back to 21% increase over projected. Because we're going off a budget. And we we went through line by line. And like I said, some of the changes that we made, I don't see. We're still at 14,000 for for, uh, uh, elections. We're still at at some of these that didn't get adjusted. And so I don't know what the purpose of spending five hours in these meetings and coming up with these exact same results. That we're just going to go 20% over projected and call that our levy. Now, again, it'd be great. We can, we can do that and then come back and have the discussion over the next two months to see where we really want it to be. But you send that notice out, that that's what's going to stick. I I don't know many people that have come back and and reduced it.
Mr. Mayor.
I understand that we don't have a lot of choices. We're between a rock and a hard place because we have a deadline of Thursday. Something has to be done.
That's correct.
I just, I'm not, I'm not at all comfortable with the way we got here. And and I I'm not willing to settle on a 21% increase over projected. When we factored in the sheriff and we factored in another $165,000 and we still can't meet it.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, the the 13, there's $13,475 budgeted for elections. I did not hear a week ago that you wanted to reduce that. And I was here at that meeting. I never, I never heard that that was, that budget needed to be reduced. And so I did not change that budget at all. What I heard was that you wanted $10,000 out of public works, $10,000 out of parks, and 10, $20,000 out of fire. And I also heard that if I couldn't come up with that, just come up with what I could possibly come up with. And I did come up with what I'm recommending to be, the $18,855 cut. Now, since since that meeting, we have found out that, uh, the part-time staff person is, uh, willing to work full-time. And it is in the current budget, in the 21 budget. And Lori would like to to recommend hiring that person full-time because she needs assistance. And so if she were to do that, I needed to add that back into the budget. And so I've added that back into the budget. If you look at 21.
Can I just, I want to go there because two weeks ago, we asked that question. And because that one, just hold on. Because that one person wasn't willing to work more, there was no discussion. I need somebody full-time. We we put it in there last year and and this has been echoed a number of times by council members. Just because it gets put in the budget doesn't mean it's automatically going to happen. There still needed to be justification.
Okay.
Whether it's it's pay increases or new hires or what is the current staffing doing? What is the new staffing going to do? You know, what is, what is going to change? But two weeks ago, we had this discussion. There wasn't any, I need somebody and if I can't have this person, I need somebody else in that position. And and that's what we've been begging for. If we're missing something, tell us what it is. If you need more staffing, if it's, if we need more public works people or more plow drivers or or more office staff, tell us what that is. And we haven't heard anything until last Friday.
Can I speak on that, please? The part-time staff member that we have is very valuable to me. She works very hard and she produces a lot of work. And we did have it in the budget at one time because I would like to have her full-time. She could add so much value to that office. And she has said, I'm not ready for that. I'm not ready for that. We had our budget meeting and after the budget meeting and she saw my desk and knew what was going on in my office. She said, I talked to my husband. If you want me to come full-time, I'm willing to come full-time. And I said, I called Lori, I said, can you please see what that would do to the budget? I want to send a a request for council action at the next council meeting, which would be in October, requesting this part-timer to go full-time. It was maybe poor timing. Maybe it would have been nicer to know several months ago. But this employee is a very valuable employee to me. She's very quick at learning. She's very helpful. And I would, I'm just recommending. It's up to the council whether you decided or not. The timing might have been poor, but it it just happened the way it happened.
And 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 I don't have a problem with that. Because we've talked many times about the importance of a valuable employee in in reducing the workload. The the problem I have is, there wasn't a discussion anytime this summer and even up until you had that discussion. That I need somebody and if it's not this person, I need somebody.
Because she's always stepped it up. When I'm, when I get in really busy, she adds more hours. She stays at the part-time level.
And and that's not the problem. She's very talented and very valuable. The question I have is, is the overall staffing? You know, is is the current staffing appropriate? Maybe the discussion is, that person becomes full-time, but you then have to go part-time somewhere else. Um, but the the question was, whether it's that person or somebody else, it's never been part of the budget. That if I can't have this very talented person, I want somebody like that, that can work full-time. And that question never came up to say, we need to keep that position in the budget. Because we said, that was put in there last year, but we didn't utilize it. We kept it the part-time status. They filled in, uh, on a temporary basis at an increased hours and increased rate. I would like a, if not that person, somebody like that to be part of my team. And that never came up until that particular person said they were available. I don't have a problem with with, we've had many discussions on the the importance of a valuable person working with you in the office. My problem is, it just never has been part of the dis, the budget discussion until she said she'd she'd be willing to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
And if that was necessary, then it was, if it's not her, then somebody else should have been put in this this budget. Councilmember Blake.
I don't agree with that. I think that many times she's said at meetings, when we've asked her about this, yes, I would like a full-time person. But I have Lisa. I want to keep Lisa. She's not willing to go full-time and so we're just going to leave it at that. So I don't agree with you. I think she has wanted Lisa full-time, but Lisa hasn't been willing until just now. And and maybe the timing isn't perfect. But if she can get this person who she feels is valuable in that office to help her. I think that that's extremely important. And I do think she's verbalized many times, she'd like her to be full-time, but she's not willing and she wants to keep Lisa. So she was willing to keep her on on a part-time basis. Until she was willing to come full-time. And she just decided, no, we can't, you can't pick when someone decides when their husband says they can, they can go full-time. I mean, this, this has probably been a debate in their home for a while and he said, yeah, you know what? This is, this is a good time.
And 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 that isn't my concern. We've we've known the feeling about Lisa and and how she's stepping up and the planning and zoning. She's doing a lot of different things. The discussion was, what, you take the names out of it. You say, what do you need for staffing this year? I need two full-time people. And then you explain why you need two full-time people. Or I need a person full-time and a person part-time. And then you put the names in. It's it, and if if we needed two full-time people, regardless of this individual's status and whether she was willing to or able to, you put in, I need two full-time people on there and I will find the right one. Preferably the one I've been training in for two years.
Okay, so what do you want to do about? I don't understand why we keep going round and round about this. What do you want to do? I mean, is the point is, because the principle to you is so important that we didn't do it the right way, that we should eliminate this?
Do we need one and a half or two people in the office?
Well, that would be up to her, wouldn't it?
No.
I would say previously, one and a half was working. We were making it work. But now I can say that if she's willing to go full-time, I can keep her very busy. I would like to have her full-time. It's a council decision. I'll bring the RCA to the meeting and council can decide what they choose.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raina.
I guess I I would, I think back to my time in in management positions. And I I agree the timing is is, you know, two weeks ago, it was, she was just part-time. So that's what we're looking at, but now it's full-time. So but there's, there's nothing that we have that says, who's going to be doing what? You know, what are you going to be able to do, give to Lisa? Why can't what you're going to give to Lisa can't be, and I might, may take the names out of it. If you have A, B, and C that you feel comfortable giving to this new full-time person, you have a full-time person, that's a deputy clerk, that you should be able to give them that work. If you're not comfortable giving them that work, then maybe that current incumbent isn't the right one for a full-time. And maybe a different person is who's better to be full-time and the incumbent falls down to part-time.
I mentioned that now where I can keep two people full-time. And the deputy clerk has been given many, many more duties. So her plate is very full now. And I can keep the part-timer very full because I'm already working over 50 hours a week. So I need to offload some work to somebody. And I can't keep the deputy clerk any more busy than she already is. She's already working 40 hours a week. I'm not giving her overtime. So I have enough work to keep a part-timer also full-time busy at this point now.
And and again, I won't belabor it beyond this.
Please.
If, but if that's, and I'm not, can I say that? With that being true, why didn't we have a request for a full-time position in this year's budget proposal? Because one individual wasn't working, willing to, wasn't able to work that. And that's, that's what I would just, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to go into a budget proposal saying, the staffing needs for this year are, in public works, I need, the city needs this. And the and the administrative, the city needs this.
So I understand all that, but this was a very odd year. My full-time deputy clerk was out for many, many months. So the part-timer stepped up to full-time. So we managed and tried to keep everything afloat. This was a very odd year. If we would have had a normal year, I would have said, you know what? I'm ready for another full-timer and here's why and I could explain why. This year, because it was so odd, having one person out, training in a part-timer to become full-time. And then once the full-timer came back, the part-timer went back to part-time. So we got, it was not an easy, an easy evaluation this year of employment. So the brunt of it was on me. I was working the many extra hours, averaging about 50 hours a week, but mostly more than that. Uh, and trying to keep the part-timer, she was on track doing all full-time work. And we're doing all three jobs. So now we've gotten through that. We've got our our full-timer back just from the past month or so. And we're all trying to get back into our roles. And I can see, I still have 50 hours worth of work. I could pass some of it off onto the part-timer. She said she's willing to go full-time now. I can use her full-time. The deputy clerk is working hard at her 40-hour-a-week job. And I've got plenty of work to keep me busy for 40 hours. So it's, the timing isn't exactly perfect. I know how to staff. I know how to see where I need help. And this was a tough year to determine that because of the having people out, not only in the office, but public works too. So there was a lot to juggle this year.
Oh, I I I appreciate it. It's been a challenging year. I I will say that the full-timer's been back almost three months now.
Okay, I lose track of time.
But but, and that's why in the budget cycle, it's like, now that we have the full-timer back, the part-timer was working full-time for a while there. While you got reorganized, um, after the months off. Um, that's just where I would have expected. I would love to see a particular individual in that spot, but whether that person takes it or not, I need that extra body somewhere between July and September 27. That being said, you know, um, well, I'll I'll leave it at that. I I still go back to not having heard from the chief yet. We're at 1,928. And we still have to decide what to do with $50,000 additional here. So that could go up. We were looking at taking out 40,000 and now we're going to go up 50,000. And so, like I said, it it's between a rock and a hard place because we have to make a decision and give something to the county by Thursday.
Mr. Mayor.
So and and I don't want to do this at 11 o'clock again. Councilmember Alders.
Does this report contain all the information in this memo?
Yes.
It does. So the staffing levels that Lori's looking for, the updates to the part.
They're all in there.
The changes to the fire department.
No, that's not in there.
That's not in there.
Nope.
Yeah.
We just got that at 4 o'clock this afternoon, or 4:15.
And and I I will say, the discussion we had previously, what we got at 4:15 today was the, um, or whatever time it was today, was the extra $6,000 for building, repair, and maintenance and Medicare costs. But what had originally been put in by the fire chief was 282. We had 276. And so we were 6,000 below the the proposed budget that the chief had put in prior to his maintenance and Medicare addition today. And so, um. So that that will change these numbers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would just like to have a a brief discussion about, you know, the the wages for the firefighters. Because I have actually. about, you know, the, the wages for the firefighters, because I have actually, I have the detailed numbers for the firefighters, what you, what you're paying your volunteers every month. And it's about $3,000 or less every month. And so if you take that 3,000 and you divide it by 11, and then you multiply it times 19, and you multiply it times, times 12, you get less than $65,000. It's actually, it comes up to be $61,500. So I budgeted the 58.7 plus the 3,000, which is $61,700. That's if, if they have all 19 firefighters in 2022. That's the most that they would spend, probably. And that's how I calculated. I don't know how 70,000 was calculated, I cannot tell you that. So, I, I don't know, you know, if, um, the chief can tell us how he gets the 70,000 dollars and, and, and where that comes from, but we can't really rely on the 21 budget, because that was only of, basically, we didn't know how much we were going to spend on a new fire department. And now we've got some numbers, and so we've actually looked at the detail and determined how much is going to be spent. Now, if you want to change that, you can go ahead and change that, but the budget that I have in there is what I'm calculating from what you're paying volunteer firefighters right now.
Chief, would you like to address that?
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that is not accounted for that, and I'm coming into this a little bit blind, because I don't have the detail that hasn't been shared with us.
Right, right.
I don't have that historical data. The piece that is unaccounted for in the payroll side is we also have not hired officer staff as of yet. We're very early and, and dare I say, in the infancy yet of this fire department, and we do have salaries that are allocated through policy and procedure to pay officer staff. So that would be the one thing that I would want to make sure that we include in 2022's budget, once we get these, um, officer staff identified, because that will increase payroll.
What, what is, what is, I'm sorry, you're-
An assistant fire chief and a couple captains.
Isn't that included in the contract of 77,300? That's not included in the contract?
No, that's accounted for-
That's administrative.
That's administrative costs. So, so these will be in-house firefighters as part of the succession plan moving forward.
Okay.
Which was identified in the fire department policies and procedures.
Okay.
Um, the second piece of that is, I'm very careful on how we budget, and traditionally, and most fire chiefs will tell you, in the paid-on call part-time fire service, two major events can throw off our budget pretty significantly, one way or the other. We can't predict when we have a major fire, a major crash, or a large grass fire, so we do have to budget a little bit on the high side, so we don't incur those unanticipated overages. I try to be very conservative on how I budget those numbers, so we're not putting in, for example, a hundred thousand dollar payroll budget, which wouldn't jive even if we had 10 or 12 major incidents. So I'm very careful on that payroll piece. Lastly, the thing that isn't lost on me is, just next door in St. Francis, we're experiencing a 50% increase year-to-year in call volume this year, from '20 to '21, and the year's not done. We just went over 521 runs today, we topped out last year at 484. So if that trajectory finds a home here and now then as well, and without an entire year of data, I can't accurately predict that. So, again, I'm trying to be conservative, we did reduce our payroll dollars from what we're budgeting this year into '22, so we are making concessions that we are a little bit high on our payroll piece. I want to make sure that we don't go too far below where we're at. So those would be the pieces that I would add into Ms. Jaeger's detail on salaries, if that makes sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Who spoke? Councilmember Raynor.
To Chief Schmidt, so, did I hear you say that the, the individual firefighter payroll information was not shared with you?
I have not seen a budget detail that has accompanied this memo, so I'm, I'm in the dark, and I'm, that's not, I'm not blaming anybody, I just haven't seen it.
You didn't request it either.
But that's, um, that's based off the firefighter pay that you provided to me, that's what got put into there.
And that's why-
And then she divided it out if you had the full number, so-
Yeah, I just haven't seen the aggregate.
Okay, I just want to get that clarified, thank you.
And again, I'm, I'm not, it's not an indictment or a blowing on-
Yeah, and I, and Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
I'm not either, I just wanted, I, I heard something, I just wanted to get clarification on it, that's all. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, under Dave's budget for 2022, the pension contribution went up to 15,000, can you explain that there?
Yes, so with the SDF Para Volunteer Firefighters Fund, we have initiated the process with Para, they come in and do an evaluation. We know that that pension fund is starting at zero, because we are not getting this year's state aid, this year's state aid is still being allocated to the Ramsey Fire Department, because the staff that are currently working for us and now then are getting the benefit of an entire year of the Ramsey pension.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So our state aid is going to get allocated back to them. One of the things that we also understand is, in order to make sure that this pension fund is funded to a level that provides a respectable pension benefit for these firefighters, that it may require a city contribution. Now, 15,000 is a ballpark figure at this point. So what we allocate in St. Francis is $500 per firefighter per year as a city contribution. That allows us to fund our pension to a $2,900 per year per firefighter benefit, which is what we're trying to model over here. Again, at that $500 mark, at, per firefighter, at 20 firefighters, right, we feel like we're going to get into the ballpark, but again, we want to make sure that there is money allocated and set aside for that pension fund. So when we do establish it, we can have a pension number, benefit number, that is attractive for that retainment of firefighters. So that's where that number comes into play.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, 500 times 20 is 10,000.
And because we don't have the formal documentation and the formula provided by Para, we wanted to budget a little bit on the higher side. It's easier to go backwards and give money back than it is to come back to council and ask for an additional-
That's 50% higher.
Five thousand. And, and it's for the council to decide. If they want to cut to 15,000, then that's what is going to happen.
This would have been a good discussion to have, if I had to, you could add. Because again, I stress it enough, we're three days from the deadline, we've never been here before.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've never been this close either before, ever. And I've done this 30 years. So, this is a new, new era for me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
So, last time we were, uh, uh, the goal was to stay flat with 2021, right?
Correct.
So, the difference between '22 and '21, if I look at this latest roll-up, is $57,000. And we're adding 20,000 to that, based on, um, based on the fire marshal's recommendation of 288 versus 268, so we're talking $77,000. And this includes, um, budget approval, or budget for a full-time person for Lori, not, you know, we'll have to go through the right channels, but the budget is in there for it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So, last week we were looking at 40,000, now we're talking 77. So, last week the direction was try to go down 40, we didn't go down 40, we actually went up 37.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Yep.
So, we either have what we call, where I work, a bake sale and find 77,000.
You don't want me to bake.
I'll bake.
And align it at 1-871, and we know we've got a $77,000 gap that we need to close. Or, we say, we're not going to hire this full-time person, we pull 30 out of there, and we pull 20 out of the fire department, and we get back 50 grand.
Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Alders, you done?
Yeah.
Councilmember Raynor.
I, I would be, um, I, I'm not, um, I'm not comfortable with changing the firefighters, the fire department's budget. We are new into this, if we cut ourselves short, we'll, we'll only harm ourselves in the long run. I'm comfortable with Chief Schmidt and Schmidt and his projections, he is the expert in that field, he's been doing this, and, and I'm comfortable with him staying at the number that he's at. If we come in less, that's great. You know, we always would like to come in less than what we think, but I'm not willing to go less than, than what he's asked for. I'm not willing to go to, uh, to full-time people. I, I, um, it's my belief that a, a part-time and a full-time, and Lori has to decide which incumbent she wants in which position. I don't have enough information in front of me to decide that there is the need for two, or two full-time people. I understand Lori has a lot of work on her plate, but it's, it's the responsibility to manage it. We don't know who is doing what, I don't know what's been handed to who. We've had somebody in that position, other than her absence this year, was full-time, and Lori's plate is still full. I, you know, and she says she's giving things to the, the full-time incumbent, I'm sure she is, but I just, I would like to see us stay at the full-time and part-time, and Lori makes the decision between the two incumbents, either between the two incumbents, that one stays, one is full-time, one's, one is part-time, or if she needs a different full-time person. I understand there'll be training, and, and that throws in the hole another wrench into the, to the, to the, you know, it's a lot more work to train people in, but do we have the right people in the right positions? And in the right positions that can assist Lori, um, without adding additional staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Lori is one full-time right now and one part-time right now?
Yes.
So you're essentially asking for this to happen, Mary?
I'm, what I'm saying is it's Lori's decision to place, if, if we stay at a part-time and a full-time, it's Lori's decision to determine if we stay with the two incumbents we have, which is the better one to be full-time, and which is, then what the other would be part-time.
So no change, currently?
No, I'm not, not, what I'm saying is, she needs to decide incumbent A or incumbent B.
Councilmember, to, to hear what you just said.
No change in time.
Right.
Still part-time, still full-time.
But she determines which is which.
Well Lori, you're asking for both full-time.
Correct.
So, it's still not a change, Mary?
Yeah, where's the change there?
Because I'm not, I'm not comfortable with going to full-time. I want to stay with a full-time and a part-time, with the clerk determining either-
That's, that's council's decision, that's totally fine.
Councilmember Blake.
I think, as a council, we need to support the staff, and especially our clerk, if she feels she needs more assistance, I think as a council, that, it's just like helping the, all these businesses with the water, we're showing our support, and we're showing them that we care about, not the water, but the, um, the phones and the internet. We're showing our support, that we're, we're trying to help them out, we're supporting the businesses we want to be part of, of their success. I think we need to show the same respect, the same support to our office. There, we're working as a team, we're not against each other, and our team just asked us for some help. And as a team member, I want help, if that's, that's the one working in the office, that's the one who knows what's going on, she wants some help, I want to, I want to support that, because she's part of my team. It's not us against them.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
And I'm not trying to be us against them. I go back to my experience in business-
But yours isn't hers.
Okay, but in business, your management team is not, I've never been in a business situation where my management team would tell me, yeah, go ahead without that, without any documentation whatsoever. And I understand this strikes us, she will give us an RCA in October, but at this point, we have nothing other than a request. I would have been laughed right out of the meeting, had I done something like that.
But I'm not asking for a decision tonight, I'm just asking to keep it in the budget so we can make a decision.
It's no different than what we're dealing with the fire chief, it's literally no different. And we're trusting him to provide a service, she's asking for the same thing, but we're not trusting her decision, so.
And, and I just want to be careful there, so that, um, we're, we're asking both of them for documentation, why do you need what you need to do? And, and both of them need to back it up. Chief has to back it up, and, and, and as it was brought up, he's projecting 50% high on salaries, and he's got to be able to justify that. So I, 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 I don't think that we're treating it differently, we're saying, both of you, back it up.
I totally agree, but we got an information from the chief at 4 o'clock, and we said that's okay, we got information from the clerk.
I don't think anybody said it's okay yet, we haven't got there.
Well, we just have some support to it.
We got the same level of information from the clerk, and we said, that's totally not okay, so.
Well, and, and so, but again, I want to clarify, other than this, this, the new information that you have here is the $6,000. Everything else you've had, the chief sent us out two months ago.
So, the last time we looked at the fire budget, it was 268, the proposal tonight's 288.
No, the chief's budget was 282. What you got mailed to you was 282,000. That's what his budget was. He, what he, what he emailed today was a correction on his 282, he said he failed to bring in building, repair, and Medicare costs, and, and he was asking for an additional $6,000 on what he proposed. And I don't know what happened between what he proposed to staff and what staff proposed to us, but there was a, a significant reduction. And I think that's what you were trying to explain, Lori. Um, in that you, you looked at it and said, we think your salary's high.
No, no, that's not true. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, myself and Dave and Lori met, and we went over a budget, and Dave agreed at that time that that was going to be okay, and that's what I submitted to you guys for approval, and that was the 268. Now, he might have brought in the 282 originally back in, in June or July, whenever we were looking at this, but he agreed to the budget that we talked about in that meeting, and that's what I brought to you. Now what I've brought to you tonight is $8,000 less, because you were asking for $20,000 reduction, and we did not hear anything from the fire chief. And so I tried to come up with something, and that's where I calculated out the salaries, and thought that would be the easiest place to have a reduction for that, for the fire. So the amount that's in there tonight, the, the, whatever it is, I don't even know, the two, in my budget, is, uh, the two, uh... Let me find it down, sorry. It's 268, yes. So it must have been 270, it was 276 that I brought you.
276, that was previously.
Yes, 276, and, and that's the budget that Dave agreed to in the meeting that we had. And he might have had a 282, but we discussed everything, and, and we agreed on the 276. And so now, it's 268, because that's where I could possibly find reductions. And I literally was trying to do it, because we had no information from the fire chief. So that, that's where I came up with the $8,000 change.
So, so, um, um, so, previous to, I'm going to say, previous to our July meeting, we were all, sent a budget from the chief that showed 282, that's where I came up with that number.
Right, and I, I, that's not the, a budget that we agreed to, we agreed to the 276. We were sitting in the meeting room and, and-
Okay, and, and so at that time-
Yeah.
-there was, there was some discussion, and we, we were all copied on and- and we, we were all copied on an email that said, don't share this with the council or the mayor. But he reports to the council and the mayor. And, and so subsequently.
Right.
We contracted with a chief and assistant chief and administrative. And they sent out a budget at that time saying, here's what we're requesting. So we brought that saying, this, even though you were told not to share it, you shared it with us as you should because that's the direct line of report. And the budget, so it came up in that discussion back in July that he's saying 282, but we're showing 276.
Right. Well, and the 276 was at a meeting that we had and that was the number that we agreed to. It was Lori and I and Dave. And, and I'm sorry that if we misunderstood that he agreed to that number, but that's the number. But it's really not that.
And maybe, maybe, you know, I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't know.
Right.
But at a, at a meeting we had in July, we had that proposal of 282. And it somehow never got worked back in saying, that's not what we heard. Let's call Dave and figure this out. And I'd have to go back and look at the email, but I would assume that you guys were copied on the same budget that we were presented with.
So that's where the confusion came in and that's the only reason why the email from Lori went out saying, please, we're, this is still a working budget.
We were working documents.
So when it goes out like that and it's not official yet, we hadn't had a chance to meet yet. So then you're confused, you've got this number in this budget, but we hadn't had a chance to work on it together. So that's the only reason why Lori said, please, don't share with the council yet because we need to talk this through. And then we'll present the whole thing to the council, to everybody on the council.
Right.
That was the reason behind that. It wasn't malicious. It wasn't anything other than we're working on the budget together to present the entire budget to the council.
Let's, let's, we won't settle in on that one right now. Other than to say, whatever happened at that time, subsequent to that, we were given a different number and we brought it up each time that, well, they're saying 282. And, and nobody got back to say, why are you saying 282? Because we agreed on 276. Somewhere we had a disconnect there. And I will admit that the extra $6,000 tonight, I don't like those surprises either. But we never got back to the discussion that came up every meeting since then was, we're disconnecting here because we see 276 and we have a paper in front of us that says 282. Somebody figure that out.
So Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't recall ever being asked, why is there a difference between 282 and 276?
We have to pay, we have to somehow, I don't know. We say at meetings and what is not, somehow we're not connecting. Did anybody else hear 282? Because I brought it up every time we had a meeting. I'm saying it says 282 here and, and I'd circle it on here. It says 276. Something has to be corrected here.
Right, and I don't recall you ever saying that.
At 10:30 at night, we threw out, say, you know, because the fire department didn't use their whole projected budget last year. Well, again, they're five months into a brand-new department. They're not going to use the whole projected budget.
Right, 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 they're not.
That was, that was, that was an impetuous decision because it was late at night. And we just got to quit doing those. But we said, take $20,000 out. And I said, that's actually 26,000 because his proposed budget was 282 and we're going from 276 down to 256. And so I, I have a separate question, so, because it may be some of our numbers here. But on the document we have to work on tonight, the budget, the most recent budget proposal, on page 10, City of Nalan, Historic, Current and Projected Tax Levis and City Tax Rates Includes General and Debt Service Funds. Okay, everybody with me? 2021, 2022. Total levy before credits, $1,007,13,560 and then subsequent numbers with a gross tax levy increase of 392. On page 18 of the same document, same header, City of Nalan, Historic, Current and Projected Tax Levis and City Tax Rates Includes General and Debt Service Funds, were almost $30,000 different. 168,5, 260 and a 2.2 gross levy increase. What am I missing?
I don't know where, I, I think that the page, one of these pages is incorrect.
I'm hoping one is correct because they're not the same.
The correct one is the 1 million, oh, so the 1,536, 276, that is including the new position. And this 1,507 is, I think, the one that does not have the new position in it. And I thought I labeled that.
Because everything else on the page says the same thing.
Right, right. And it was just showing you the difference with, with or without that new position.
Yeah, so, so on the one, it's a 2.2% increase and the other, it's a 3.9% increase.
Right, a 3.9 increase for the new position.
And so you're saying the new position is an addition of $28,300?
That's correct.
And it changes the tax levy by almost 2%? More than 1.8%? 1.7%? So do we know, Lori Yeager, where we stand? If we go back to a fire budget of 2.88, 288,625? What does that do to us?
So adding the 20, that's what's at 20,150? That, that gives you a 23% or 5% increase in the taxes, tax rate. The gross levy increase would be 5.14.
And so you say the tax rate would also be up?
Yep, the tax rate would go from 22.874 to 23.174. And on that, the tax revenue is 23. Instead of a, it would be a 6% increase in their taxes rather than a 2%.
So the gross tax levy increase, so you're saying the tax capacity rate would go up to 223,874?
Tax capacity would, I'm sorry, 23,174.
174.
This is on page 10?
Yes. And the gross tax levy increase would be what?
I hate doing numbers like this.
You and me both.
Great, so 23,174.
It's going to be four or something.
Okay, so the, the change would be, instead of a 1.9% increase in the tax.
3.9?
Taxes payable. Are you talking residential now or what are you?
No, I'm talking, I'm still on page 10, gross tax levy increase. 3.92 currently.
And now it would be 5.14 with the fire changes.
And the full-time position.
And the full-time position, yeah.
All right.
But you have an option. You can use some fund downs instead of adding back in the whole fire department amount. Or you can maybe not add in the 120 dollars, maybe only add 15. Right, you know, you, you do have, you know, things you can do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
Do we need Shane anymore?
No.
Well, yes, but not tonight.
Maybe good home to his family.
You take my glasses off, I don't see very far. I looked up before and I'm thinking, we don't really have any more for that. I mean, you, you've shared with us, you've enlightened us what micro-surfacing is and given us something to think about, but you're not going to directly impact the levy right now because we don't know long-term what it's going to do. Obviously, the capital plan will and I apologize for keeping you so long.
Shane, drive down Ferry and see if that is micro-surfacing because it's so nice. Right by the fairgrounds there.
Yeah, they've just gone south of that.
That is really a nice roadway. We just drove it.
Get it like that and I thought, wow, this is smooth. What did they do here?
Yeah, it's so nice. Look at it. I mean, that might be a.
But tomorrow, not today.
Yeah, you go home tonight.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly do that. Mr. Mayor and council also.
That road is closed for the weekend.
Hang on, let's see what Shane's saying here.
Also, this is generally the time of year where if you're going to do a project next year, you would make that decision, the next step would have a resolution, order an feasibility report. And so if you'd like to have one of those presented at your upcoming meeting, I guess just let Lori or myself know. I would recommend starting a little bit sooner last year. I think last, last year we didn't order the projects until January. We were out surveying in the, in the snow. And it also resulted in a later bid opening, so.
Yeah, I remember. And last year was, Doug on election screwed everything up.
Sure, there's a lot of things last year, but.
But yes, I, I remember we were scrambling in September, October to get something by November and it got late, so.
Yeah, if there's no objections, I think I'll just work with Lori to have a resolution for the projects that would be assessed. Like I said, with the other projects, the patching and the micro-surfacing, those will be 100% city-funded, so those will need a feasibility report and could do those real quick.
Well, is the council okay assessing the business district?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
Can we have a agenda item to do more of a holistic five-year plan? So we can look at that and what we think these funding levels would be before we make a specific resolution on 2022?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to prepare a five-year plan for your consideration. It probably won't be before the October meeting, but certainly before the November meeting.
Yeah, because, because as I discussed, and again, I don't know how quickly they're going to be doing the project there off the north of Bakuna, but I wouldn't want to go through all the work of putting in the plan and realize it's really better for 2023 because that project will be built and that's a better time to tie the new road into the existing road.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on the other hand, if the roads and the pavements are kind of poor condition.
Bakuna right now is a cul-de-sac.
Right, but the 184 going in.
190th.
190th, okay. You know, that's repeated heavy truck traffic.
Yeah. Why the 190th truck?
For building a new, for building new houses and building new roads and importing the materials.
Yeah, they're probably coming off 194th. You know, that, that being said, that's, that's my question is, you know, maybe Bakuna isn't part of it because it's a cul-de-sac going to be turning into a through road. It just, you know, I don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time engineering something that.
Sure.
Isn't really. And that's why I say it's, it's tough. I know we want to normally do this by October. We've talked this every year to try and get this done. Calendar-wise to get, you know, September, October, we need to get this out so we can be doing this before January. We do it in the fall, we get our bids out and we get in the front of the line. So I, I agree. I just, I'm not convinced that 190, 190th and Bakuna are the ones we want to choose. If we're doing Iguana, 199th and Farit, we've never discussed from a business standpoint where we, the assumption is property owners would pay 50% whether it's a business or residential. Is that still what we're expecting?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we, the city doesn't have an assessment policy, so.
See, that's, that's why just sending him off on that task. We don't have an assessment policy for doing businesses and, and, you know.
But determine each, for each project by the will of the council.
Yeah. I like, we've often said, you start changing the rules in the middle of it though and the people who got it otherwise are going to come back and say, why? Why has it changed from business over residential? And maybe there's a reason, but we haven't had that discussion yet.
Well, if anything, the assessments typically go up. Commercial.
Commercial? As far as you mean more, a greater percentage?
That is correct. Some cities will charge a higher percentage for commercial businesses.
Because of the type of traffic that's on it?
Right, but.
And because you need it, so, so, I don't want to get lost in this, but this is part of the detail. Commercial road weight limit versus a residential road weight limit. Do you have to do more substantial work even with an overlay? Or you're just going to rely on the base that's there?
My numbers are based on a two-inch overlay instead of a one-and-a-half-inch overlay for the commercial district.
And that's reflected in the 280?
Correct.
So I got a lot of questions. It's nine, 10. What do we want to do with Shane? Do we want him to throw some numbers together? He isn't free. Or do we want to talk about what our policy is going to be on assessing? And what do we want to do? We could all go out and drive 190th, 194th and Bakuna. But Bakuna right now is a cul-de-sac and it's going to be, if this plane goes through, will be a through road.
So Mr. Mayor, what have you done in the past for assessing? What's your, been the philosophy of?
Have you ever assessed businesses?
You haven't?
Not that I, not since I've been a city. I don't know when the roads, the roads went in before they built their buildings, so.
Oh.
And it's a commercial road, so it's going to be, what's the tonnage on that road?
Yeah, so we have to look at it differently.
I don't believe it's supposed to have sorts of 10 tons. Everything's 10 tons unless it's supposed to otherwise.
Oh, we got some heavy trucks running on that 10 tons.
They sure do.
Oh, well, that's a whole nother kettle of fish. So, so if that were the situation, and we had to run a 10-ton road, do you have any idea of what it was constructed to?
I do.
Thing was constructed to 10 tons?
At the time, the standard was nine tons, so I think it was constructed to a nine-ton road. But I do have records of, of what it was constructed to.
I just, you know, if, if we're short on the tonnage, I'm not sure a two-inch overlay will help us a whole lot, but. So do we, do we decide that in October? If you were to get started now and give us something for October, I don't know what I'd even do with it, so.
What, what'd you say?
I don't know what I would do with it because there's so many questions. I mean, he could put numbers together, but if it's a nine-ton road that's got 10-ton rating and what do you figure those, those vehicles between North Valley and, and A and V? I mean, why do we run it for tonnage there?
Well, I hope they're legal loads.
I guess they're multiple axles, they're.
Right, it's axle weight. So by, if they want to carry more weight, they put their axle down, yeah.
All right. So council, what would you like Shane to do? Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Greenberg.
I like the five-year plan to give us some sort of a strategy going forward for the city. That would be one. The other would be looking into assessments for next year. And also into the petuminous patching and the, that thin overlay, what was that called again?
Micro-surfacing.
Micro-surfacing.
And putting forth a proposed strategy. That's my input.
So what's, what's a deliverable that Shane brings back to us from what you just said?
Well, for sure, I want to see a five-year plan and that doesn't have to be, like you said, maybe not next meeting, but a couple of meetings out, a couple of meetings out.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
If we want to get going on this before the snow flies. If we want to get going on this before the snow flies, shouldn't we make some kind of a decision in the next meeting or?
Well, I don't want to I don't want to take this disrespectful, but that's kind of ready, firing. Because if we don't know that this is a good project, just moving ahead doesn't make sense. We want to make sure we're moving ahead in the right thing. Is there an alternative in in your your windshield review of the roads? If we decided because we don't know what we're doing with with a commercial assessment because we don't have a policy, we don't know 190th and Vicuna from a pending project, is there a backup plan? What would you what would be your next 2023 plan? Because what we the whole bottom of this has nothing to do with assessments, so that's just money we have to talk about with this council.
Yeah.
That's so but from an assessment standpoint, so we could move forward. As Councilmember Blake is saying, what would be the next best project list for 2022?
Mr. Mayor, I could I could I think we could consider delaying the commercial park here for a year. I think I don't think that's going to drastically change the condition of the pavement. I still think it's a good project, but it will give us time to talk about what the assessment amount is.
Yeah.
Literally, every highlighted road on this map is due for an overlay. And so I can pick another road or another series of roads for an overlay for next year.
What do you have on the north end? We never got up to, was it Xenon and some of those that we?
Mr. Mayor, we're drifting. So let's give us some direction on is it a five-year plan with a certain amount of expense every year and then have them put together?
There's two things he said. Five-year plan, and and that from a budgetary standpoint, we need to know from capital improvement. But if we want him to repair paperwork for a 2022 plan and we take these two out of it, what's next? And so he's got a map there that's highlighted and says every one of those is subject to or potential for overlay. So, you know, again, one of the things we tried to do before is group things so that we were trying to lower cost by saying if you do this in neighborhood rather than one here and one there. So if you want to come back with a proposal for feasibility on something other than these that's on your highlighted list, that would make sense. So we'd have the five-year plan and something to keep us moving forward on a project for next year that's within this budgetary number. Does that make sense?
Mr. Mayor can do that.
All right.
Okay.
Councilmember Blake, you happy with that one? We're moving forward?
Very happy.
Joel, does that cover at least the basics of five-year plan and something for next year? Thank you.
All right, well, have a good November.
Councils, okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
You're going to get to go next, I think. If you're lucky.
This is all I do is late nights.
So we need to come up with a resolution on a preliminary levy which would likely be too, well, in my opinion, would be higher than I would like to see it.
Right.
But the staff has to get something in to the county by Thursday, and we have to make a decision on Internet by Thursday. And we're going to be talking about a well this week as well, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just as a reminder, you do have $15,000 in the budget as a contingency item. And if you wanted to eliminate that contingency, you could do that, and that would get get you down to an increase of only 4.23% in your levy rather than 5.1.
That sounds better.
And then, you know, you know, you've never really used your contingency in the past, and so I'm saying eliminate that. And then possibly, if fire is under budget next year and someone else is over budget, we can move, we can adjust budgets as we're going along during the year. And it won't, it shouldn't impact you by eliminating that that contingency budget.
All right, I would, if we if we haven't ever used it, and I'm going back looking at these, going back 10 years, I haven't seen it used either, so I'm okay with eliminating that, certainly. My target was as close to zero as we could get. That gets us closer than five.
Yeah.
We're going the right direction.
Right.
You know, Mr. Mayor, it doesn't sound so bad when we say it's an increase of about $16 annually. This homeowner will pay about 907 in city taxes, an increase of about $16 annually.
But now that will be that will be different now if we add in the $20,150.
You went from two to four. So.
So it'll be, it'll be, no, it's 22.9.
Well, that's $30 annually. That is too terrible.
No, but I'm saying the other thing is you realize, you know, again, if you if you look at what we just said, that, you know, the school district is also going to go up.
Yeah.
Your property values are going to go up.
Yeah.
And what that number is, is that's our little part of it. But any of the county increases, the school district increases, or your property value increases.
Right.
That's going to.
That'll be a much bigger portion.
And those are the ones that are going to call us saying, what happened? We only went up 12%.
I know.
But the reality is, so right now, we're looking at 5.14. We take out the 15,000 contingency, and we're down to four, what?
4.23.
It's better.
So it's an increase of about 62,000 bucks, right?
Right. For each homeowner?
No, for 20, 2021 budget.
I thought you said 62 dollars.
No, 62,000.
Yeah, that'd be a little more. I didn't hear the thousand, sorry.
So again, it's 62,000 over the.
2021 budget.
Okay.
Budget.
Yes.
It's 200,000 over the projected actual, 200, 20,000 over projected actual. That continues to be my concern is when we go budget against budget and we haven't actually needed that much money.
Right.
I like to look closer to what did we use with understanding why we use that?
114 of it is the sheriff.
Yeah, and again, as I said, the math I did was if the 2021 budget was 1,872, and we throw in the sheriff at 114, it still puts us at 164,000 extra. Now that is coming back with the fire. Part of that is, and since we we had some of the staffing in there, some of that is going to be public works that wasn't fully staffed this summer. So that's a.
Yeah.
A fair chunk of that, 164,000. About half of it.
There's only rounding after you take those three out. I mean.
Yeah, but that's using the 2021 budget as the target, not the 2022 1,928.
So then I would change, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you agree, on the 4.23% increase, the resolution now would read, the general fund levy is going to be 1,637,410.
No.
So what I'm doing is.
So go to page 10. And the total levy before tax credits would be now what?
It'll be 1,000, um, 1,718,710. That's the total levy. But the general fund levy is 1,637,410. The other two don't change, and the bottom line goes up to.
1,9637 what?
637,410. And the total certified levy is going to be 1,718,710.
And tax levy after credits?
Tax levy after credits is 1,541,417. I don't know. And that's that's not a for sure number. That's.
It's just the number on here, so I.
Right, 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 right. And the tax capacity rate is 22.951. And then on the top, then the general fund will go up by the 5,150. And that is 1,928.
Is that back, Lori, the gross tax levy increase then was for what?
4.23. So the general fund budget amount is now 1,933.
So where what page are we on?
I'm on the resolution.
1,933 what?
933,415. And then the total budget is.
Second page.
1,361,835.
Where did we go? Where was the 1,900?
So it's a separate.
It's the resolution.
That's got the memo on it. I'd attach the memo as the resolution.
1,9 what?
1,933,415 is the general fund. And the total then is 4,366,985. And then if you go down in on the second page of that resolution, the general fund levy will be 1,637,410.
Say that again, 1,637,410.
And the certified levy will be 1,718,710. And then I would just like to announce that the public meeting is set for December 14th at 7 o'clock, 2021. And that is your, that will be when you adopt your your final levy and your final budget, December 14th.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainey.
Can I have Ms. Jaeger repeat the total certified levy?
Yep, 1,718,710.
Thank you.
And that will be the resolution that we will ask you to adopt this evening so that we can send it to the county. So again, the total total budgeted amount is 4,366,985. And the total levy is 1,718,710. And I've already changed the resolution to read that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I'm comfortable with those numbers. I want Chief Schmidt to be well-equipped to go into getting our department out of infancy and into childhood and into teenagerhood and into adulthood. So with and and I'm also comfortable with Lori Strike having enough money in there for a full-time position. She can send an RCA to us. We can talk about it at that time and debate it and determine if we're going to do that. But for right now, we have those two things taken care of. I'm comfortable with the contingency being removed. So I'm just stating where I stand on this budget.
The question I have is, is that include the fire budget of 288,625?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Okay.
I'm doing the math. It looks like it was.
All right. So that would be the new numbers. Any other discussion? That website, nowlandminnesota.govoffice2.com. Is that the website now?
We have both of them running.
Nowlandminnesota.govoffice2.com?
That's what the original one was, yes.
I can change it to the new one. What is the new one?
Any other discussion? I can hear none, then we'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution RES-2021-30, adopting a proposed 2022 budget and certifying a preliminary property tax levy collectible in 2022 and setting the public meeting dates with the revised numbers that we discussed of 1.93, 1,933,415 for the general amount, which brings the total amount to 4.366,985, which if we flip to the back page means the general fund goes to 1.637,410, which is a total certified level levy of 1,718,710 with the December 14th, 2021 meeting date.
And a continuation of the meeting date of December 21st if necessary.
Correct.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Alders?
I second.
I have a second by Councilmember Greenberg. Do we have any other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainey.
I would ask Councilmember Alders and Councilmember Greenberg if they would amend their motion to also include that we would hold additional meetings to have discussion to possibly lower the 4.23 increase.
Councilmember Alders?
Trying to think if I've got enough energy for one more of these.
We've got three years left.
We're just getting started.
So what do we think we're going to talk about next time? And we know where the three increases are coming from. And we're not willing to reduce those three. So that's where I struggle. It's the fire department, which we said we want to support. It's a sheriff increase. And we said we need to support Lori and her team with her team being out for half the year, and we're adding a half a person for a year. So those are the three increases.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainey.
It would be a half a person plus all the benefits on a full-time person.
And what we said was it would be a separate RCA to approve that. So if that's not approved, then that budget won't get spent. But I guess I don't see us debating that at the next, at a future budget meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainey.
Because I would think that we should continue to do our due diligence, and if we can lower it in areas, that's a benefit to our residents. And that's, that would be my preference. If it doesn't, if you don't accept the amendment, that's fine. It's up to you.
Well, I mean, team, this is the fourth meeting. We know what three increases are. If we come back again, we're going to talk about the same three things. Are we going to change anything? So if the discussion's yes, then I'm willing to do that. If the discussion is, we're going to wait for an RCA on Lori and have that discussion on her team, because that's.
I want to be careful. It's not her team. It's we are as a city, and these are our employees, and we are a council. We don't want to have teams here. We have staff that works together with us. And 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 I don't want it to fall down into personality issues because it's it's a fiscal responsibility that's gotten us a double A-plus rating, and we work together altogether. Because when you start saying somebody's team versus somebody's team, then it gets personal. And and we got to be careful of that. My point early on is I've. My point early on is, I've never seen it happen yet. We, everybody keeps saying, you can lower it, you can lower it, and I've never even had the discussion. Because once it gets in, everybody says, I don't want to have another meeting. We already talked about it. To her point, you don't have to add it to your amendment, to your motion, that's fine. I'm just saying, the reality is, don't keep telling me we can always lower it, and, and say, but I refuse to have that discussion. We understand the three big rocks, but I'm saying that we've had four meetings, and we have not yet talked about some of the details of those, other than those three big ones. And, and to make, you know, the, the discussion tonight on the roads, we're still just going to seal coat half the town every year, but it doesn't make sense. But we haven't had that discussion. So if some of those make sense, we should have it. If we have a discussion, we should be prepared to lower it. If not, let's not say we are. But that being said, you don't have to put that in your motion.
So the whole point of the road discussion was to figure out why we had a $900,000 earmark. It had nothing to do with tonight's budget discussion, other than.
It had everything to do with it. We're seal coating over $30,000 every year, but we don't necessarily need to, or nor should we.
So that's why we asked for a five-year plan that included a certain dollar amount of expense and a certain dollar amount of capital.
It's also why we asked for a detailed budget that says, how much are we putting into this? But, that being said, that's a discussion for another time. Right now, we're voting on a resolution. And if it's, if it's germane to bring this up, then we have to call another meeting to say, somebody on the council would like to discuss lowering something specific, and have a meeting for that between now and December 14th.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Mary, do you think you have enough information, uh, to be able to work with, to whittle down some areas?
In some areas, I do, yes. Some areas, I don't.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
So one of the things I appreciated about one of our budget meetings is you had gone through, and you had, uh, highlighted specific areas in the budget where you'd like to see change, and we had a tangible, um, number to look at, and a goal of yours to meet, and we, and the, the 14 points, or however many points it was, those bullet points gave us, uh, traction and progress and movement. And, um, I, I'm willing to listen to, you know, Mary's proposals for reductions with, you know, that sort of, uh, format, which gave us, that, that meeting was great traction. So, um, the long, lengthy discussions, you know, uh, they're great, but it, it kind of slows things down. Bullet points seem to have moved it forward, so those two ideas, Mary Rainville? So I would be open to another budget meeting if Mary is able to find some areas, bullet point them, give us the, you know, I, I don't want to have another meeting where we go, well, here's some, you know, let's just talk some more. I, I want some hardcore bullet points where we can actually see differentiation, and then decide. So the meeting isn't, you know, long and drawn out.
And, and since I was the one that spearheaded that, and, and had I had these numbers and not been busy last week and this week, I would have done the same thing this time, but understanding that. When, when we came in with a specific number, a specific target, and we went through and highlighted, and came up with our 18 action items, we, we. Well, I had the, I had the highlighted list, and then Jason said, let's go through line by line, and we came up with that.
And that's what we need to do, because otherwise, this goes on and on. We need to go through it.
And had we had this information enough time, I would have done the same thing tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
But that being said, to, to Councilmember Greenberg's point, if it can be a specific, um, identifiable, bullet-pointed discussion, and then, then it can be said, we don't have to go into great detail, it's a yes, no, that makes sense. And if that's what we're looking for, I just, you know, again, I, I, it frustrates me a bit to say, we can always lower it, but never even talk about doing it. But if there are things that some council members think are germane to do, and bring to the council, then the council says yes or no.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
One of the things that's frustrated me is the continually changing numbers, and finding discrepancies in the information that's been provided to us, um, lack of information, and, and the, again, we talk about something, and two weeks later, it's changed, and I just, I, I have also never been involved in a budget. This is my ninth budget, and, um, we've never gone this late. We've, uh, and, and nothing derogatory towards anybody, but when we did our budgets with Cory's, she had it down to a system. And we had details from day one. We'd go line by line, and she had reasonings behind why expenses were, were what they were, um, what we could do to make changes there. And we didn't have surprises, and I understand with Ms. Strike, and that all of a sudden, the, the part-timer has now chosen to go full-time. That throws everything into a loop. But we, we need to really look and see, again, I believe we can reduce it. I don't know by how much, but that we could reduce it by something which, in the long run, is a benefit to our residents, and it's our job to be, uh, very careful with their dollars, and, and do our due diligence to make sure that they're spent correctly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
How long has Cory here?
16 years.
Oh, she's been here.
She's in there a third year.
Okay.
But I've never received any direction on budget process, and what I was told was that, and Mayor Pilon told me this, at budget time, they plop down a sheet of budget and said, here's your budget. That's what you told me. So, there hasn't been clear expectations. Uh, we are providing as much information as we are getting provided, and trying to work with you on this, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I mean, and this, this goes back to the communications that we had conversations with Pam from, from the league, uh, two years ago, um, the communication piece, and we need to reschedule that. Um, but we, we had meetings, and now, there were, I believe, action items from that meeting, and I've not seen anything, so.
So that's, that's another discussion that Linda wants to talk about before we leave, um, because we have to reschedule that. At this point, germane to this, uh, Councilmember Greenberg, it's not part of the motion, but he's saying, if you would like to put some bullet points together for the council to review, and we can schedule another meeting between now and December, it would be appreciated to be specific and clear. And, and if that's the case, then the council will get that information, and we can evaluate it. And if it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense. If it makes sense, everybody will agree on it, and it will be team. That being said, we have a, a motion to, uh, to approve the resolution with the new numbers that were stated in Jason's motion.
With an amendment. A motion with an amendment.
What's the?
For the additional.
Oh, did Jason agree to that?
I can agree to that. I'll agree to it.
Okay.
I don't know why, but I'm going to agree to it. I'm sorry.
With, with the, with the amendment, as specified and clarified by Councilmember Greenberg.
So, so one la, one last ask on that. Why are we going to have Mary do that?
Well, I, I'm not saying we are. Any council member is free to do it. Joel just happened to say if Mary had specific things, because she spoke, said she had specific things.
So should we not give that ask to our team members that have the budgets? And if it's Lori has 80% of the spend, and Dave has 20% of the spend?
I, I would, I would hope that anybody that's involved with the budget, whether it's council members or staff, that can look at it and say, you know what, I've looked at that, and I think we can tweak that, I'd love to see that. And if, and if Chief Schmidt, you know, was listening tonight, and he says, you know, I could take that number and tweak that, you know, after what Lori was saying, you know, I would hope that they would say, between now and December, I've revisited this, and I think I can tighten it up. And if Lori says the same thing, if there's something she sees, you know, I'd certainly welcome that. And if there's a council member, and I mean, certainly, I'm not saying it's Mary's task. If there's a council member that looks through this and says, I have one item on here I'd like to address. I want it, I want it on the bullet point. But if, you know, any, any council members, they can just say, okay, Mary's got three, and Jeff's got one, and Linda's got 22, and. But whatever it is, we, we consolidate, and we put them in and say, okay, here's the things we would, we, we think we might be able to tighten up on. And if you see something on there, you can at least question it. We have a quick bullet point of meeting. Can we tighten up here or not? And then we get prepared for a final, uh, budget approval in December.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would recommend that we would meet, uh, on this, on November 16th, um, come to a decision, and then we can stay with the existing December dates.
November 16th is when she'd like to have a follow-up meeting.
Oh, we're going to already decide it, even before?
Just before, before the, if we don't need it, we don't need it, but she's just saying that if we're going to do something, pick a date, because we know already, all trouble, it's trouble.
And I, I, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will not be available then either. Yeah.
6 o'clock?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question?
Yes.
When next, oh, in October, when Lori brings the RCA, do we vote on that RCA at that time?
Say November 16th, Mary.
Or?
6 o'clock. Typically, any RCA that's presented would be addressed, and if we have the information we need, we vote on it. If we think we need more information, we ask for more.
That decision will be decided on, in October. Okay.
Yep.
Can we look at our.
Uh, we have to vote here first, yeah.
Oh, we can vote in.
So, so we have the, uh, motion, Councilmember Alders, to Resolution 2021-30 with the revised numbers, and the, uh, potential follow-up levy discussion on, uh, November 16th, seconded by Councilmember Greenberg. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Did you not, did you say nay?
I said nay.
About, we need?
No, on the vote. Okay. So, that being said, we have our preliminary levy ready for the council, for the county. Councilmembers, before we disperse, there was a, a question on, uh, the communications meeting is scheduled for October 21st, and you are going to be gone.
Because I'm a week.
So the question is, is there another time that, um, 25th, will you be back?
Yes.
Can people meet on Monday, the 25th, for the communication meeting? Lori, does that work for you?
Yep.
Counsel?
Is this October?
October 25th.
Okay. What time?
6 o'clock. It's what we had originally scheduled.
October 6th, what did you say?
October 25th, 6 o'clock.
I'm not trying to bring treats to that one.
It's my mom's birthday.
And then, what's the agenda topic?
Communications. Follow-up on the communications. It was originally scheduled for October 21st.
Thank you for changing that.
Everybody good?
Good, and then we meet on, uh, 12, right?
Yes. And the 7th.
And the 7th?
Yeah, Liz has those items on the 7th.
Oh, and the 7th, what time is that one? I didn't remember.
Uh, 7th is, uh, 6 o'clock work session with Liz. Checklist, flow chart.
Yes.
Accessory buildings. Everybody got that, the 7th?
7th, the workshop.
Yep.
12th, council meeting. 25th, communication meeting.
Move to adjourn.
6 o'clock, you said workshop.
Work session is 6 o'clock, yeah.
And move to adjourn.
That being said, motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Second.